Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the February 2nd, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Kenai City Council on Order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. And if you are able, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Here.
Councilmember Basden?
Here.
Councilmember Sonart?
Here.
Councilmember Petty?
Here.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Here.
Councilmember Winger?
Present.
Councilmember Naxted?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council, before we get to general approval, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown you should have before you with requested additions. To the packet, action, add to item D1, Order Number 3267-2022, Amendment Memo, requested by the city manager. Action, add to item G2, purchase orders over 15,000. Carrilla fire memo, requested by the city manager. Pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the agenda with the noted laydowns. Second. Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, our agenda is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda. Councilwoman Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the consent agenda and request unanimous consent. Second.
Is there anybody from the body that would like to amend the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda into the record, please?
Approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 19th, 2022. New business action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. New business action approval purchase orders over 15,000, brought to you by the administration. Action approval, non-objection to liquor license renewal for Uptown Motel Backdoor Lounge and Uptown Motel Louis, brought to you by the city clerk. Ordinance Number 3270-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general, airport, senior citizens, and water and sewer fund, and authorizing a one-time premium payment to eligible employees, brought to you by Vice Mayor Glenn Denny and councilmembers Winger and Sonart. Ordinance Number 3271-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriation in airport land sale permanent fund to transfer earnings in excess of budgeted amounts to the city airport fund, brought to you by the administration. Ordinance Number 3272-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general land sale permanent fund to transfer earnings in excess of budgeted amounts to the city's general fund, brought to you by the administration, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that is on the consent agenda, which was just read into the record by the clerk? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Unanimous consent was requested for consent agenda approval. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. That brings us to item B, Schedule Public Comments. This evening, we have.
I'm sorry. I noticed Barb Ralston was just slid into the room, and I believe she did have public comments, since she was just slid in.
On the consent agenda?
Not on the consent agenda.
Okay. Is it just unscheduled public comment?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get to that after our scheduled public comment.
Okay, thank you.
So first up, under item B, Schedule Public Comments, we have Koi West, City of Kenai Marketing Presentation. Mr. West, you have the floor.
Thank you. Let me pull this up. I'm zooming in so you guys can see my presentation here. Okay. So first, I want to thank council for giving me the opportunity to speak here again today. I'm glad that I actually have the opportunity to do this in person this time, and not like Zoom like we did last time. I always come during the winter and try and see you, and when I get the opportunity any other time during the year, I can zoom in and give you an update on what we're doing on the marketing side. I also want to take a couple of seconds just to congratulate the newest members of city council. I haven't had a chance to speak before you. I'm really looking forward to showing you the work that we've done and really kind of where we are, bring you up to date in terms of our scope. So, one of the things I like to point out about our presentations is all the photographs that you see here in our presentation, our original photography that were taken for the city. It is something that they have access to for their own benefit, for their own internal marketing. I also always like to start off with really kind of what is our scope, or what is our mission, and what are we doing for the city? And back in 2019, when we first started working together, we had identified really three items. We wanted to promote the city of Kenai as the best place to open a business. We wanted to promote Kenai as the best place to relocate and raise a family. And then thirdly, we wanted to promote Kenai as the best place to seek your Alaskan adventure for travel and tourism. So we keep those three things in mind with everything that we're doing, but as we really break down what the scope entails, a large part of what we do is actually promoting and supporting local businesses, and particularly within this last year, we've had the opportunity to do that quite a bit. We also are promoting relocation. That is sort of our primary ad campaign to Alaska as well as the Lower 48. And of course, we're using a lot of the advertised.
Tourism areas to our state get the most traffic. Have you gotten any statistics? Do we see 50% of all tourism go up to Chena Hot Springs, or they go into the Denali area? And if we're tracking that, are we able to put some marketing to get those people to come into Kenai if they're in those heavy areas?
Yeah, that's a really great question, and I have a few answers for that. So, we consider ourselves to be a data-driven marketing agency, and so we are constantly looking at what does the data tell us in terms of getting the most exposure and the most reach? The other thing is, I approach the scope and the limited budget that we have really from the mindset of a sort of a fiscal conservative. How can I really make those dollars stretch and get the most value? So when we start looking at where are those biggest tourist opportunities for us to present ourselves, the approach that we took last year was we used a geo-fencing campaign. And what that means was we were able to pick areas within the state of Alaska where we knew people would already be in state, and try and feed them digital advertising either through mobile or on their desktop. I do know that a lot of the RVers use their mobile devices to try and plan their vacation and try and actually figure out where they're going to go to next. They're using social media. They're also using Google. And so by being able to target specific areas, we were able to deliver advertising, and I do think that that's what contributed to the numbers that we had last year. I do have a couple of other responses here. The way that we used our geo-fencing was we specifically targeted RV dealerships, RV parks, campgrounds, places where we figured that there would be more tourists here. And so our hope would be that when they're done with their day's excursion, or they've actually reached their destination, and they start to do their trip planning for the rest of their trip, that we're then able to really try and reach them. The big challenge that we have, particularly when it comes to advertising, is outside of digital advertising, it can be very, very expensive. And so when you're looking at, say, print advertising, or magazines, or, say, airport advertising, or even TV, it can be very, very pricey, and we have really tried to get the greatest use that we can with the budget that we have allocated. I look at Fish Alaska as being a really great opportunity from a traditional advertising standpoint, just because I know that it reaches a lot of the individuals who are more likely to come to Kenai, particularly within the state of Alaska as well as the state of Washington. And my hope is, is that through their email list and some of their web exposure, that we might be able to piggyback on some of their audience as well. But as we move forward, depending on how we progress in terms of our scope, we're constantly looking for new ways to continue to market here within Alaska, including some of the smaller communities and maybe smaller destinations. Now, to go back to your original question in terms of do we have the statistics on where they're going? Well, we do know that a lot of them are going to Denali. And we do know that when the cruises are here, certainly many are in the sewer. And so we're doing the very best we can to target those areas along with the work that we're doing. But our hope honestly is to try and capture them while they're still in the Lower 48, too. So part of our relocation effort is to try and introduce Kenai to those people before they even start doing their trip planning. And then once they're here, we just reinforce that with additional messaging that's geared towards tourism.
Thank you. So Alaska is very unique in the fact that a lot of these areas remotely don't have any service. So how are we overcoming that instead of just digital push? Because I know Denali doesn't have reception. Chena Hot Springs only has reception in their main building. McCarthy Kinna Cop Mine doesn't have reception. So how do we overcome those big tourist areas to get our name out there if we're not able to do digital pushing? Do we have these flyers that are hung up in their chamber areas? Or something that we're working with as far as getting it out in those key areas?
So I don't know what the distribution is on the visitor guide that the Chamber produces. I know that they do send it out to various other visitor centers throughout Alaska. So I can only speak to that in terms of print. In terms of the work that we're doing, when we look at the actual data in terms of who and where people are picking up on our digital messaging, we know that they are tapping into Wi-Fi somewhere. You know, Starbucks, gas stations, some of the parks even have Wi-Fi. So they are stopping, and they are using Wi-Fi, and our hope is that we're able to capture them. If they're checking social media, likely they're seeing our messaging. But at the end of the day, we don't have print. There's a substantial cost along with, you know, not only printing, but delivering that print. And so again, going back to Fish Alaska, this will be a print opportunity that we know gets distribution throughout Alaska. And our hope would be, you know, maybe we can reach more people that way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. West? Councilwoman Petty?
Yes, thank you for your presentation, and we were giving, saw the videos that y'all have created, which were just top shelf. Absolutely, and I loved, I loved, I love Kenai, you know? That was brilliant. Were y'all responsible for some of the new banners that were in the city?
We did, actually. We designed two rounds of designs, and the second round actually has not gone up just yet. The first round, I think when we looked at what we did, we really loved the design, but I don't know if it translated very well to the medium on the polls. Some of those, there just wasn't enough contrast in those designs, yeah. And we realized that once we got them up. The unfortunate thing, I think, is we even had printed some proofs, some physical proofs, that when we looked at, they looked great. But the challenge when you're, when the challenge when you're dealing with sort of an out-of-home medium like that is, like on a cloudy day, some of that stuff just disappears. The other thing, and I should probably present this in the next time that it comes so you can see what the new designs look like, we actually incorporated more images of animals in the new banners that we have. So city has those files. They're ready to go. I don't know if they're in print yet, but I know that that's something that we're, you know, working on actually having.
Yeah, and also, the font was terribly small. And like you mentioned, the colors were not a popping type of eye catcher. So I hope with y'all's new designs that y'all will keep that in mind.
Yeah, we definitely, we saw them in person and knew immediately that it wasn't going to work, so we needed to do something else, and so we got right on that this year. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. West? Thank you for that. Councilwoman Glenn Denny, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm listening intently, and thank him for his presentation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to see you all again. I look forward to seeing you again hopefully this summer. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Councilor now on item B2. Next up for Schedule Public Comments, we got Brandy Nickley and Bill Learman, Alaska Capital, Alaska Permanent Capital Management, 2021 Financial Performance, Financial Projections, and Recommended 2022 Asset Allocation for the City's Permanent Fund Investments. I'll just know that there's a sister ordinance related to this presentation tonight. Ms. Nickley?
So good evening. Thanks again for having us this year. We have the same similar agenda that we tackle every year, which is we kind of give you some context in terms of what we think about the near-term market conditions. We recap how the portfolio is positioned, what performance has been, and then we switch gears to the most important part, I think, which is thinking more strategically in terms of long-term planning for the permanent funds. And so as it has been mentioned, we do have some recommendations in terms of changing up the allocation of it as we look forward to the next 10 years. And so I'm going to try to move. And so I'm going to try to move through the first two sections fairly quickly because I want to reserve the time that we have this evening for the most important part of our agenda, which is that strategic planning. So let's start here just with an overall account summary. And you can see the account inception with APCM was September 2008. There's been total deposits of $21.9 million, cumulative withdrawals of just over $14 million, and the market value at the end of December was $36.4 million. So if we look at the annualized account returns since inception, it is 8.7% average annual return. That's gross of APCM's fees. And if you incorporate the fees that you pay our firm to manage these assets, the return is 8.46%. The allocation right now over the long term is set up to be 65% in equities and 35% in bonds. And if we look at the overall fee schedule that you're paying us, it's a tiered schedule based on the assets that we manage, and the current effective rate is 0.16%. That's what you pay to APCM. So with that brief intro, I am going to just talk over a few slides about the near-term market outlook. And just to give you some context, what we utilize this information for is just to think about how we want to position relative to your longer-term targets. So your longer-term target is 65% equity and 35% bonds. Do we want to own more equities or more bonds, you know, based on what's happening in the near-term market conditions? And so I want to focus your attention at the top of the slide here, just to recap, because 2021 was a particularly strong year for the stock market. We were in this recovery phase coming out of the deep recession that we had from the pandemic. And that really helped equity performance in the portfolio. And we actually owned more equities than our 65% target. So the return was over 11% for the city for the calendar year 2021. And if you compare that to what we'd expect the long-term average to be, which is just over the 6%, recall that's our goal over the long term, so that we can distribute about 4% and also inflation-proof the funds as well. So a very strong year. In addition to strong returns, we also had lower volatility than what we incorporate into that longer-term plan. And I think that's an important concept to keep in mind because as we kind of move through into this different phase of the economic expansion, we will experience more volatility. And that's certainly what we expected going into 2022, and of course, in January, it already started off. So I'm going to focus your attention on the kind of key themes we have there. Slow or not slow, really the takeaway here is that we think global economic growth is going to continue to be positive, not as strong as it was last year, but certainly above the kind of pre-COVID trend. So growth is still expected to be strong. And when we think about monetary policy, recall we've gotten a lot of support in terms of monetary and fiscal policy as we went through the COVID crisis. That's going to start to change here, of course. And, you know, our interest rates here in the United States are projected to start to increase a bit. And the Federal Reserve has also been out there buying bonds, trying to keep longer-term rates lower, and that's going to slow as well. So that's what we call being less accommodative, not tighter monetary policy. Monetary policy is tight when the goal is to restrict growth. And I think right now, we do anticipate it to get tighter, but not too restrictive. Now, that's the big risk out there, and I think that that's what's been causing the recent market volatility because people are concerned is, are the policymakers going to make the right move at the right time in the right magnitude? And that in itself is going to lead us to have more volatility here in the near term. So if you look at the investment insights that we have listed there, we have risk control to struggle. Essentially, that means it's going to be difficult in a rising interest rate environment for the bond side of your portfolio to produce positive returns in the near term. However, I think it's important that we recognize that bonds still play an important role in the portfolio because they still are there to diversify your equity risk, and they will do well in times of unforeseen crisis events. Fundamentals support risky assets. So essentially what we're saying here is that corporate earnings are still expected to be positive, corporate health is particularly strong right now. And in that backdrop, we should expect to have some support for risky assets. But given the changing policy dynamic, we will have more volatility as we look into the new year, especially relative to last year. And right now, I think we have to focus a little bit more on where we're getting exposure in the portfolio because we're moving out of this kind of recovery phase into what we're calling the expansion phase. Because growth is still positive, but it's going to be cooling off from that initial, you know, jump in growth that we get as we're recovering from a recession. So on the next page, I just want to highlight really quickly that when we're looking at our equity exposure... It's not working. I don't think Bill's better at technology than I am, but we'll give him a shot. Anyways, on the next page, we are noting mid-cycle investing requires selectivity. So we're just saying that, given the positive growth for the economic outlook, we do anticipate good business spending and consumer spending. And with that, we wanted to look at areas of the equity market that tend to do well when we're seeing those spending actually occur, but also in a rising rate backdrop. And so with that, a couple of areas came to our attention, US small company stocks, stocks in Japan, natural resource companies, and infrastructure. And so those areas are being modestly emphasized in the portfolio as we move into 2022. And then on the next page, I just want to highlight, if we're, if we have a preference for equity over bonds, but we also anticipate more market volatility, how are we going to position the portfolio to absorb some of that volatility? And so right now, I think this is a key point for this discussion because one of the key tools that we're utilizing is an asset class called alternative beta. And I'll explain here in the next section what alternative beta is, but essentially that asset class acts differently than stocks and bonds and has a return projection just a bit above the bond market. And so for those of our clients that actually already have that asset class as an allowable asset class, we're utilizing that to kind of control volatility. In the city's portfolio, we kind of have a proxy for that right now with some cash and some defensive stocks. And so that's kind of what we're doing in light of this pickup in volatility that we On the next page, we have asset class returns, and this is the calendar year 2021. I think this sets the stage nicely to think about the portfolio. So we're going to transition here soon. And I want you to note a couple of things on the asset class return page. I hope you have it in front of you. We have these asset classes broken out to those that are meant to control risk in the portfolio. So of course, that's our bond side of the portfolio. And then risky assets, which are meant to help us with overall growth and inflation protection over time. So you can see the bond market had modestly negative returns in a lot of different bond asset classes, with the exception of those that are actually adjusting for inflation. And then high-yield fixed income is another new asset class that we're going to talk about this evening. And we do think about high-yield fixed income as a risky asset class, and I just want you to note that here for a minute. But it certainly has a high enough yield on it that had a positive return last year. And then you can see the light blue bars, the US equity market up over 20% across the board, and then the asset classes like commercial real estate up over 43% certainly does well in times of higher inflationary periods. And so that's why those alternatives perform so well. So with that kind of context in regards to broad asset class returns, we'll go to the next section and look at the actual portfolio. So this blue area chart that you see displayed here is just the market value of the account over time. And you can see at the end of December, it was $36.4 million. Those bar charts that are displayed at the bottom of the graphic are the actual calendar year returns that the city has experienced. So you could see you've had some very strong years, a couple of modestly negative years. But overall, if we average all of these returns, that's how we're getting the 8.7% return since inception. And then if you advance to the next slide, you can see where the portfolio was positioned as of the end of December. So that strategic benchmark that you see there in the middle of 35% fixed income and 65% equities, that benchmark is really important because that is the overall asset allocation that is designed to meet your specific goals and objectives over the long term. And the range column that you see next to it is where APCM is allowed to position within each of those asset classes based on our near-term outlook, right? And so the percent of asset column tells you where the portfolio was at at the end of December, and you can see that we were modestly underweight fixed income, 34.1% versus that target of 35. And so as we went into 2021, we owned a lot more equities versus our 65% benchmark. And over time, we kind of took some of those profits and got closer to our longer-term target, kind of as we went throughout the year. And so this is where the portfolio is positioned at the end of December, and if you advance, we could look at how the returns were in light of that. The dark blue bars there are, that's the actual investment portfolio. And the orange bar is the performance benchmark. Now, that performance benchmark is that strategic benchmark we just saw on the previous page. So of course, our goal over the long term is to get close to that benchmark. You can see on the one-year basis, the account was up 11.94% versus that benchmark of 11.57. Again, that's primarily due to the fact that we owned more equities going into the recovery than what our target allocation is. So we look to add incremental value over time in the near term, and you can see since inception, the performance is pretty close at 870 and 883. So that's a look at overall performance for the funds. And I want to pause here for a minute just because we've kind of touched on, you know, what we expect from the markets in the near term, and we've reflected upon where we've been historically. Our next and final section is thinking about, you know, planning for the next 10 years, kind of what we envision in terms of strategy. And so I can pause for a second if there's questions.
Any questions from the body? Councilman Petty.
How often is our portfolio rebalanced, please? Or is it automatically rebalanced?
It's not. We, I guess the answer depends on the overall market conditions, but the portfolio is reviewed monthly to determine if there will be a rebalance.
Any other questions from the body? Seeing none.
Okay, great. So let's talk about the next 10 years and our overall portfolio recommendation. I'm going to focus your attention here on this plan, analyze, implement review. This is really just a summary of our investment management process, but I do believe that there's value in process. And I think a lot of the success that we've had over the many several years is the fact that we continually do this. We're forcing ourselves to reflect upon, you know, the return that we need to meet your spending objectives, what we think is reasonable expectations for long-term returns from all of your different asset classes, and confirming that that strategic benchmark is well-positioned to achieve those goals over the long term. And if you go ahead and advance to the next page, let's just recap what our goals are, right? So we, when we're talking about projections over 10 years, we're assuming that the Federal Reserve is actually going to meet their inflation target, which is 2%, right? We know inflation is higher now. Of course, if we look back for the decade after the financial crisis, they never got to 2%, right? So we know some years, of course, we're going to have higher inflation, and then hopefully they will meet their target of 2%. So that's in our expectations. Of course, you have about a 4% distribution rate. Of course, recall that it can range from 3.8 to 4.2 based on where the portfolio is at relative to inflation, but overall, it's 4. That gives us a required return over the long term of 6. And so you can see the 65% equity allocation that we have now achieves that objective. So if you look at the long-term expected return, which integrates volatility, that's 6.2%. And we take out inflation, that gets us to just over 4%. So I think the key point here is that last year, we made a change because we were only 55% equities, and we went to 65 so that we could maintain this overall goal of getting, you know, 4% net earnings to spend over time. So the portfolio, I think, can still achieve that. What we're going to discuss today is the fact that we think that we could make some modest adjustments and achieve the same return with less risk. So that's the primary point here. Go ahead and advance. So what is going on, some of the things that we want to think about? Okay, of course, we all know that in the, right now, we have higher inflation, right? And we're probably going to go through a period over the next 10 years where we have this higher inflation, interest rates have to rise off of the very low levels. Now, what happens when interest rates rise is the bond prices fall, right? And sometimes when interest rates are rising and policy is changing, the equity markets get a little jittery as well, and we see increased volatility. And so during those periods of time, we could see some shorter periods where stocks and bonds are moving in the same direction, and generally, they move in opposite directions. And so our, that's kind of the challenge that we have ahead to try to address, and that's why we want to talk to you about two different asset classes on the next page. So the two asset classes that we're introducing for adoption for the next year is high-yield bonds and an asset class called alternative beta. So let me, I guess, jog your memory back to that slide where we are breaking out asset classes between those that control risk and those that are risky. And high-yield bonds are still a bond, but we don't, but they're, they're bonds that are issued by companies that are below investment grade. And because of that, they're more risky, and you get more yield or interest on them. So when we think about high-yield bonds and their role in the portfolio, we do expect them to act a lot like the stock market. But they don't move as much as the stock market does, so because they are up in capital structure. So we all know that if something happens to a company, bondholders get paid before equity holders. And so in this context, we think high-yield bonds are a risky asset, just like the equities that you own, but just less than adding more equities to the portfolio. I think an interesting statistic that you should think about in high-yield bonds is written up there in the top right-hand side, which is if we look at a long history of bonds, high-yield bonds, they've captured about 55% of the upside of equities and 33% of the downside, which kind of makes sense given they're higher up in the capital structure. So alternative beta is the other asset class that we want to introduce. This is a more complex asset class. So it basically, from a high-level perspective, can be described as owning stocks, bonds, currencies. But the trades that the managers do in these funds actually create a return stream and a risk profile that's different than the stock and the bond market. And so it can be a bit complex, and we have spent several years doing our due diligence in this space, and we do feel comfortable adding it to our portfolios, and many of our clients have chosen to do so because of its attractive characteristics in times when interest rates are rising. You can see in the writing here, in 2018, when we went through a rising rate environment, alternative beta returned a positive 0.6%. Stocks were down over 4% and bonds did nothing. So you can kind of see how it behaves. Additionally, when we went through the COVID crisis, large company stocks were down over 19%, and alternative beta was down about 3.5%. So then you can kind of grasp the risk perspective from that as well. So if we look at the portfolio, how it's structured now, and how we incorporate these two asset classes, you can see here on this page that we have your 65% current portfolio allocation, that long-term target. And you can see if we added high-yield bonds and alternative beta, where we would fund it from. And so essentially, if you look at the expected annual return, they're basically the same in terms of both of the portfolio. But I want to focus your attention on the expected range of returns. Now, what this is, is what we expect these portfolio returns could be in any given year, 95% of the time. So the current portfolio has a downside of potentially negative 15.3% and an upside of 28.8%. We can experience any of that range, and then we anticipate that kind of as we experience the up. And then we anticipate that, kind of as we experience the ups and downs, the long-term average will go to six point two. And so if, if you compare that to the new portfolio, it has downside of thirteen point six and upside of twenty-six point nine. So, you could see that less, less risk there in that range of returns. Additionally, in the writing, in the third bullet point, you can see that if we went through another COVID-type crisis, we think that the new portfolio could modestly do better as well. And so I think the key takeaway here is that your current portfolio is projected to achieve your goals and objectives over the long term. What we're doing here is just taking the work that our team does in thinking about always optimizing the portfolio and saying, if we make, if we add these two new asset classes, perhaps we could achieve the same return with less risk. And that's why we wanted to bring it forth to you. So, if we turn this into just a wealth simulation, which I think, I think is helpful from, you know, forward-looking planning perspective, you can see on the next page that we have simulated a starting portfolio value at thirty-six point four million dollars, which is roughly where we're at. And then we take out all of your distributions every year, kind of where the portfolios would be at the end of ten years. And so the black lines there are where we project these portfolios to be. So, really, what, what we're saying here is the returns are essentially the same. What you can note is that the new portfolio, the range of returns in terms of the best possible outcome and the worst outcome is tighter than the current portfolio, just illustrating the lower volatility. We displayed the cash flows down below and those cash flows are, they're relatively the same, basically, because the returns of the portfolios are about the same. So, if we had to put, you know, some decision framework around this on our final page here, this is what we would say in terms of helping you make this decision. I think that if your top priority is to generate the necessary return with the least amount of risk, then you could look to add these new asset classes. But if you want to just maintain the same risk level as what you owned last year and, you know, keep your same allowable investments, traditional stocks and bonds particularly, then you can still hold the current allocation. And so that's really the question that we have today. What kind of questions can I answer on all of that?
Any questions on the body? Councilmember Basin?
Thank you, Mayor. My first time sitting in a presentation, but I've sit in presentations similar to this. When you're dealing with the fund investment throughout the year, the cash that you have available, if you're going to go into high-year, high-yield bonds or you're going to change, do you go all in at one time? Do you, do you dollar-cost average or, you know, or do you wait for a buying situation to take place?
It depends on the market conditions, right? So, if we're in a period like we were last year where we had lower volatility, extremely accommodative policy, we'd anticipate that we would have a bit of a recovery. We went and bought all of the equity overweight that we wanted to at the time. And so it depends upon what environment that we're in and how we take those positions.
Any other questions?
Okay. I would be remiss to not introduce my colleagues here. I didn't do that at the beginning. It's been a long day. This is Bill Lerman. He's our CIO of Fixed Income. So, he, him and his team manage the bond side of the portfolio currently. And then we have online Vinay Sharma. And Vinay is one of our senior portfolio managers at the firm. And he actually does all of this modeling. He is great at statistics and kind of forward-looking, long-term perspectives, works really closely with Terry and the team to make sure that we have all of this moving in the right direction. So, I just wanted to introduce Vinay.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Petty?
Yes, on this alternative beta, so it's not a stock and it's not a bond. So, what is it?
It, it, it's a management of stocks, bonds, currencies, rates. So, you, they do own that, but they put on trading strategies to create a different return stream. And so we did include in the appendix the two alternative beta funds that we're recommending to get exposure to that asset class. But it is complex. It could be, it, it could include, for example, selling short a stock and having an offsetting trade. So, it can get very complicated. It is a space that requires a high level of due diligence and understanding because you won't experience the diversification benefits without understanding exactly how the fund is run.
And is this something that's done in-house or is that a, a third party that does that?
A third party. And so, Vinay, the two funds that we're utilizing, the managers are?
For the mutual fund, B I M B X, that is managed by BlackRock. And Q A I is managed via a combination of New York Life Securities and IQ Hedge, which actually provides indexing for the space.
Council, oh, do you have a follow-up? Councilmember, Councilmember Basin?
Thank you, Mayors. So, in this alternative space, you're still acting as our fiduciary for the city. And when you're making those trades, it's not about additional fees and that type of stuff for, for you? Is that correct?
Yes, I'm glad you asked that question. So, yes, APCM is definitely a fiduciary. Our, we have an open, conflict-free, free platform. So, when we look at getting exposure to the space, we have an open door in terms of who we're going to look at. Our role here is really assessing how are, how is the manager like BlackRock getting exposure to these different strategies? What is their risk control framework? And monitoring that to make sure that we feel comfortable that we're going to get the results that we desire.
Thank you.
Oh, right. And each, each year, we do do a more extensive review of all the funds that we own in the city's portfolio to confirm that relative to what's available now, that we're still owning the most efficient vehicle at the lowest cost.
If I could follow? I guess my only comment based on this ten-year outlook, no matter what the ups and downs of the market that you're going to experience, the city still needs to make their withdrawals, correct? So, so no matter what happens with your investment strategy, you're trying to reduce that risk for the city. So, you can still, so we can still bring out the, the four percent roughly, correct?
Correct. And so what we do in terms of thinking about how the investment policy is working with your spending policy is we, the spending policy actually has parameters in there to help absorb some of that volatility by averaging the market value of the portfolio before, historical market value and determining the overall actual dollar distribution. And so we, what, what we're doing here is we're saying that we're analyzing whether or not the portfolio would be sufficient to produce your desired distribution in both up and down markets. And then we're designing a spending policy to make those particular distributions more stable over time.
Councilmember Axon?
Thank you. Just another general question on the, because you're talking about the four percent, but I'm thinking about the two percent inflation. I was wondering how confident you are of that number or where it comes from? Or how do you, you know, just even number?
Got a headache listening to those numbers?
Oh. Hang on, hang on just a minute, Jim. I'll get to you in just a second.
So, the, the two percent number comes from the Federal Reserve. And so we know that their goal and objective over time is to achieve an average inflation of two percent. So, in our assumptions, we're assuming the Fed is going to be able to deliver on that expectation. Bill's the bond guy, but I think that there is a rule that says, don't fight the Fed. So, I think that we're trying our best to believe that that still holds.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I found these presentations interesting. And I, I guess it, it means that someone has to read ahead to try and, and really understand what we're trying to do. But I, I do see we have some, some new asset allocations. And, and actually, over the years, I see that the, the explanation and the approach is consistent and successful. So, I just want to compliment them on, on, on a fine presentation and I'll stand by. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Maybe it's for Terry. I think we got Terry on the line, don't we? Is that? In our ordinance, which is ordinance number, which considers the new asset allocations, ordinance three-two-six-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-two, under investments, the land sale permanent fund shall be managed by the finance director. And there's a new section under here with investments that was related to derivative securities. Could, Terry, could you explain that or if that's who this is, should be directed at?
I'll start it, Mr. Mayor, and probably defer to Brandy or Bill or Vinay at some point here. But one of the investment strategies, I think, that Brandy referred to in, in the, especially in the alt-beta space, is the use of derivatives. You know, derivatives can be used in, in a variety of different ways. You know, a lot of times derivatives are used to hedge currency risk or interest rate risk or a variety of risks. Another way derivatives can be used is through leverage. So, you're, you're actually trading on what you don't own, which I think amplifies risk because if things go sour, you don't actually own what you, you, you don't actually own what you were doing. So, it, it, you know, can amplify either the return if things go well or the loss. So, what, what we wanted to do and, and their recommendation, and I want to thank Mr. Councilmember Basin for pointing out, and they are absolute fiduciaries for us and they act in that capacity. They, their recommendation to us was to limit our exposure to derivatives so that they're not being utilized heavily for leverage. And, and that's that new section that, that you're referring to there is, is limiting, no matter what, what, which of the asset classes we're in, but predominantly, I think, in the alt-beta space, to limit the use of derivatives in the city's account. And maybe Brandy, if I missed anything or you want to add something, please jump in.
Okay, yeah, that, that's just, I felt just, you know, this is a part of this change to our ordinance. I think it's important to sort of get that out there so we, or, you know, kind of comprehend what that was about.
So, just so that we're all on the same page, to recap, you know, you can think of a derivative strategy. It's just a, a, the value of a derivative is based on a different underlying asset. So, derivatives can be used in a lot of different ways. It just is, your return and risk is associated with a different underlying asset, right? And so we're recommending that all of our clients, as we're updating investment policies, regardless of whether or not they're investing in alternative beta, that they actually include this derivatives language. Because it's important to recognize that even in the S and P five hundred exchange-traded fund that we own, that fund itself can use derivatives. And so we're really just saying, we, we recognize that this is happening in these funds and we're limiting our exposure to make sure that we're not utilizing derivatives for leverage to enhance returns. And we're not in a position where we can be, I guess, short, which means we're not in a position where we sold something that we don't own. We're, we're net long all the time. It gets very complicated.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Basin?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see it here, and I don't know if it's been talked about, but I, I should at least ask a question when it comes to investments and dealing with the, the alternative beta. Do you deal with cryptocurrency in any way when it comes to these type of funds or with government entities?
No, we do not at this time.
Any further questions? Comments? Councilmember Petty?
So, help me understand so that I have full clarity. You're telling me that the alternative beta does not use derivatives and they do not short? Is that what you're telling me? That the city's investments would not have derivatives in them and they would not be short in any liability?
No, the alternative beta definitely uses derivatives. What we're saying that the derivative language also addresses is the fact that even in the S and P five hundred large company fund that we own, that fund manager also uses derivatives. So, for example, if, if the fund provider is, in this case, Spyder, right, is delivering index returns and they have cash flows that they're dealing with and they have dividends, et cetera, they could, and they do, use derivatives to get exposure to the S and P five hundred and maybe not buy all of the five hundred underlying stocks. And so the fund is predominantly the five hundred securities that are in the index, but the manager can also use derivatives. And so what we're saying is that by acknowledging that that is occurring across even index funds in equities, that we're wanting to make sure that we're limiting how they can be used. Now, importantly, the alternative beta strategy absolutely utilizes derivatives to the fullest extent. What we did in terms of due diligence is making sure that at the end of the day, when we look at the entire portfolio of the alternative beta strategy, that it's net long, meaning that you're not, you haven't sold something that you don't own and have that extra exposure. We're also making sure that the fund doesn't utilize derivatives plus leverage to enhance returns. And so those, I think, are two key risk parameters that we have made sure that we're utilizing as we're looking at getting exposure to the space. So, I want to say that, look, we have been talking about alternative beta with our clients for several years now. And one of our initial attempts was to have like a working session where we go through all these different derivative strategies and try to help you understand what's happening. That failed miserably because, well, one, we're probably not professors. And then secondly, the, understanding what's happening inside of these funds took our team years and hours of due diligence. And so it took us that long to get to a point where we felt comfortable putting it in our client portfolios and we're experts in this industry. And so I think that when we're talking about alternative beta strategies now, I think it's important from your perspective to say, you know, we realize that these are complicated strategies and we're relying on APCM and their due diligence process to actually, you know, take the appropriate care to be in this complicated space. And some clients feel comfortable with that and they've added the asset class. And some clients say, no, I like to be able to say to community members, this is a stock and this is a bond and this is how much we own. And, and that's okay too. And so we view our role here as, as to say, look, we're working really hard all the time to look at the portfolio and say, can we improve it? Return-wise, risk-wise. And when we feel like we've done enough extensive due diligence to bring forth a new recommendation to you, we do that. Do you have to, you know, move in that direction? No, we're telling you here today that you can own your current portfolio of just stocks and bonds and we think you'll meet your long-term objectives. But I do think it's also our role to say, hey, even if things are complicated, this is what we're utilizing in some other portfolios.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Very good. Thank you. How are we doing, Councilman? How are we doing, Council?
Could we have an at ease?
Okay, let's take 10 minutes at ease. We'll go back on the record here. We're, Council, we finished with scheduled public comment. We're now on unscheduled public comment. And this will be for anybody that would like to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda. And I think we had, did you say Ms. Ralston on the line? That might want to speak during this time. So, Ms. Ralston, did you want to address the council? Yes, I'll come back. Maybe she thinks we're still on break here. Because we did, I guess, I'll move at this point. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the council at this time on any item that's not on the agenda or consent agenda? Mr. Tungsef.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Ryan Tungsef. I think I've met most of you all at one point. Thank you for having me here. I'll try to be pretty brief, and I'm going to wear two hats. Well, I'm not going to wear any hats, but I'm going to be representing two organizations, and I just want to speak to both. The Chamber of Commerce, and then, secondly, the Twin City Athletic Association. And so I'll start with the Chamber of Commerce, with some maybe not-so-great news. We're losing our executive director, who we really liked and thought did a fantastic job for us. So we're beginning the recruitment process of finding another executive director. We're also in the process of creating and finalizing our annual report to you guys, and I hope what you'll find in that report is not only a very comprehensive report, but a report that reflects an effort that our board has had, as well as the city manager. And I know it's a shared goal of the councils to try to work together as much as we can, be very transparent about what we're doing, with the hopes that that is, you know, a shared goal for both of us, that builds us both up. And so I'm really looking forward to you guys to be able to see a final report that's probably much more inclusive than maybe you've seen in the past, and highlights the things that we've been doing. And so I will take questions on the council, I mean, excuse me, the Chamber of Commerce, if there is any, but I just kind of wanted to give you that update about our executive director, and then also to look forward to a report that's coming. Any questions about the Chamber of Commerce?
Any questions regarding the Chamber? Thank you.
Thank you, again, for your support of the Chamber of Commerce. It really means everything, and look forward to continuing to work with you guys. Secondly, I wanted to talk about our city league basketball program. It's called, we started a city league basketball program myself, and what I would describe as a bunch of other gym rats, because we needed to have this continuity and something to do. But there was also a need for some other things, like continued middle school basketball programs. And so right now, we're running two programs. We're running the adult city league basketball program. We have 11 teams in that program, and we're playing games right now, and that's where I'll be heading over to ref the last basketball game of the night. And it's just going really well. We have 11 teams. I was taking pictures yesterday with the ACC teams in the gym, and it was a packed house. I mean, those guys bring fans, they bring their own folding chairs, like, it was a packed house. So it's really been cool to see, like, activity going on, and that revitalized in the area. And then the middle school basketball program that we're running is called the Middle Ballers League, and we're doing that in conjunction with Ken Felkley at the, at the middle school has been helping me with that a bunch. And we have six teams in that, both men's, and young men's and young women's teams, playing in that. And they both roughly run until sometime around spring break. So it's been a ton of work, and a ton of work from a lot of volunteers, specifically on my board. You know, I could just tell you who's all on our board. Timmy Smithwick has helped quite a bit. Steve Carlson is on our board, he's helped quite a bit. Amber Acton, Kyle Cornelis, Justin Wick, Andrew Shook, and myself are who are on our board right now. But anyways, with that, is there any questions about the city league or middle school basketball program?
Councilwoman Weyer.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Thank you, Ryan, for coming. I'm sad that Brittany is leaving. It's going to be big shoes to fill, but look forward to seeing who comes on and continuing the working relationship. I just want to say thank you for bringing the leagues back. You know, I've worked athletics with Boys and Girls Club for a few years, so I've sat there during very successful city leagues. And I was also there when it ultimately kind of collapsed, too. And I know, I know how important that league is, and how many participants we truly have, so I'm really glad you just picked it up and took that initiative to get it going, because I know there was a big want and need for it. So just thank you for doing that.
Sure, and it's, I'll be honest, I'm very selfish. If I don't have the opportunity myself, then I'll probably go off and create. So it was a bit selfish as well, but thank you.
I remember you throwing elbows out there, so, thank you.
Assistant Representative Devoe.
If I may ask, oh, thank you, by the way. If I may ask, where is the adult and the middle school basketball programs being held? Like, the rec center, or?
The adult programs are held at the rec center, exactly. And then the middle school program is at Kenai Middle School.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Councilwoman Bezen.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Ryan. Especially dealing with the adult league. What's the makeup between men's and women's teams? Do you have both?
For adult leagues?
Uh-huh.
It's pretty much all men's league teams, and then we have teams that are co-ed. And so it's optional that it's co-ed. For instance, the team that I sponsored, we have a woman on my team. And then, like, the ACC teams have quite a few young women on their team. So it just depends, there's a few other teams that have women on their teams as well. But it's certainly something that, my brother, right now, is actually working out at Nikiski, and they have a women's league out there that's been running. But it's something that's sort of a goal of ours to move forward, is to either have a dedicated co-ed league, or a men's and women's league. Because in previous years, there just hadn't seemed to be enough interest, but it seems like that's peaking back up now. And so it's something we're moving towards also.
Quick follow-up. So do you have over 50, like, the city manager? Could he play in this league?
I don't know. He could probably still play a little bit, yeah.
I mean, I know you're going to referee, just to tell you a joke. I mean, I know you can't tell by the athleticism that I showed today, but I used to play. I mean, I got a whole team thrown out one time. You wouldn't throw a team out, would you?
I might, yeah. It'd just depend on who it was, but, yeah, it could happen. But no, that's another, another thing that's actually been brought up in this process. It's been really neat, because so many other people just kind of came out of the woodwork, and we've got all these other plans, like a three-on-three tournament we want to do in the summertime, and pickleball tournaments and leagues, and just like, stuff has come out of the woodwork at us. But that's also one that sort of percolated to the top, I think, at some point. I know this of myself, I'm going to reach this point where, like, I'm not cool with the youngsters beating up on me anymore, and so I want to, like, level up into another age bracket, so I may create that as well, but.
So, did you, did you say there was Soldat, is Soldat participating, too, or is it just the Kenai area?
For this city league?
Yes.
It's just the Kenai area, but we have a lot of teams that are primarily like Soldat players.
Okay.
Yeah, there's at least three teams I can think of that are.
So, I was just thinking, you know, expanding on Councilwoman Bezen's comment about kicking any team out, that might be where youngsters and Soldat.
At this point, I take everybody I have, so I don't want to kick anybody out.
Yeah, I know. Imagine, Councilwoman Weyer.
Just one other thing. I think the Elks Club is holding their youth hoop shoot upcoming in March or April. Do you have any plans on maybe talking with them and seeing how you could support that youth program with them?
I haven't, but we've considered doing something like a skills competition ourselves, so it's possible. I'm an Elks member, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Totally.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Tungsef? See, no, thank you, Ryan, for coming by and giving us an update here.
Thanks for having me, guys. I appreciate it. See you later.
Good luck. Is there anybody else from the general public? Oh, I'm sorry. Council, Vice Mayor Glenn Denning, did you, I was, oh, the shit might have sailed on that one.
Do you have a question?
No, no.
I forgot to call on him.
Yeah, no, I'm out here on the Gold Coast in Florida, and they do play basketball, but they don't have an octogenarian league, so I just sit and watch.
I think that's called Shuffleboard, right? After one.
Yeah, it is, with power it is.
Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? I think we have Ms. Ralston.
I would like to, this is Bob.
Yes, Scott, you have the floor, Ms. Ralston.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and for everything that you guys do. I am a first grade teacher at Mountain View Elementary. I've taught in the district for over 30 years, and in the bush, another four years. And one of my favorite things is our Love of Reading Month for February. And we are looking for community readers to come in and talk with the kids, and read one of their favorite childhood books to the children, and then tell them a little bit about what you do, what your job is, what school was like with you. It is going to be happening on Thursday, February 24th. And we're doing it a little bit different this year because of the COVID. We're going to limit the number of people in at certain times. So you have a choice of coming in between 9:00 and 11:00, or 1:00 to 3:00 on that day. And we'd like you to go to approximately four different classrooms, and read the same book, talk to the kids on the same things. And then, if you are able to do that, we do need you to go to the borough page and go through the background check. All people that interact with our children need to go through a background check, and it does take a little bit to get through. And then, once it goes through, you're good to go. Also, you can let me know, you can either call the school, or you can email me, that would be great. And then, on another note, in May, we are having our bike rodeo, and we don't have a set date yet. I'm working with the safety person at the hospital, and also Officer Smith to get everything coordinated between them. And we will need volunteers to help, with the kids fitting helmets, checking out bike registration, walking through them. bike registration, walking through them. Some of the kids have never ridden a bike. And so it's really important that do that. And I want to thank those of you that donated last year to sponsor some of the children to get helmets. The safety person gives us it as a really good discount, only $5. And it seems like it's not much money, but for some families, it's a lot of money. And we are working towards getting all children a helmet. Last year, one of the childrens came with a helmet that was duct taped together that didn't even fit on his head. And we were lucky enough to have extra funds that we were able to purchase one for him. This project is very dear to my heart because when I was teaching at Sears before it was combined to Mountain View, one of my first graders was hit by a car and didn't have his helmet on and passed away. And so to get the children to realize how important it is to wear a helmet, no matter what age they're at, is one of my passions. So I just wanted to update the council on that and I appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Any questions of Ms. Ralston, Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Thank you, Ms. Ralston. I'm sure you're probably still in your classroom working hard for tomorrow. And I just want to thank you for all you do for our children over the last 30 years. And I am obviously approved and will be happy to sign up to come in and read for this. And I look forward to volunteering in your classroom tomorrow morning. So I'll see you bright and early. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Student Representative DeBido.
Um, sorry, but am I able to sign up for the book reading? Because something like that actually sounds like a very fun thing to do.
I would love for you to do that. I can send you a link or you can go to the Burrell page and you just go up there and it goes through the background check. And then once that goes through, you'll get an email back saying that you've been approved and then you're good to go.
All right. Thank you.
I do want to add that as of right now, we are in masks. And it may be, they will reevaluate it on February 15th to decide if they're going to continue or what's happening. So you may need to wear a mask. And all visitors are required at this time to wear a mask. So just wanted to give you that update also.
And Ms. Ralston, if I remember correctly, you also had books available for folks as they showed up in years past, if I remember correctly. Is that, is that right?
Yes. You bet. If you would like us to provide some books to choose from, that would be fine. If you'd like to bring your own, that would be fine. We are limiting the time with each classroom between about no more than 15 minutes for the close contact with the children. So you would have 15 minutes. A lot of people will start a book or pick a book and summarize some of it for them or leave the ending off so that they get the kids the curiosity to find the book in the library. It's up to you. And then just tell you, tell them a little bit about you and what you do. Because these children now need to have inspirations of what they want to work for or what they want to do when they grow up. With this COVID-19, many of the children have lost a lot of social type skills and different things and knowing what is happening in the world. So we want to bring that back to them and continue building that inspiration to work for our community or for our community and be an active participant.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Appreciate your time this evening.
So if anybody would like to do it, you could give Mrs. Winger your name and I can send you an email or you can call the school or you can email me directly. That would be fine.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda?
I see no hands or unmutes.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll close out unscheduled public comments and move to public hearings. First up, we have ordinance number 3267-2022 authorizing COVID leave for city employees that test positive for COVID-19 and authorizing the use of funds from a grant from the State of Alaska Department of Health and Social Services, Division of Public Health, COVID Emergency Operations Center to fund the leave. And I would also note at this time that we have an associated substitute ordinance with this ordinance. Pleasure, counsel. Councilmember Winger.
I just have to second.
Just move this ordinance and then we'll, then after that.
I'd like to move ordinance 3267-2022.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general, general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3267-2022? And I would also note that this, this will be the appropriate time to speak to the substitute ordinance. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Deliberation, comments from council? Councilmember Basen.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we want to bring the substitute in?
I would suggest that unless anybody wants to address just the ordinance at this time, but probably appropriate to move the substitute. Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'd like to make a motion to move substitute ordinance number 3267-2022.
Second request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we now have substitute ordinance 3267-2022 before us. And I know there was a recommendation for an amendment. We can discuss that or make that amendment at this time. I don't think that's very probably consensual amendment. Councilmember Winger?
I was going to make a motion on that amendment.
Correct. Very good.
I'd like to make a motion to amend section one and add a new sentence at the end of section one that would read, "The leave provisions authorized by this ordinance may be repealed anytime by council resolution and without further legislative action will sunset on June 30th of 2022."
I'll second.
Discussion on the amendment?
Request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested. Are any objection? Are you okay with that, Councilmember Glenn Denning? I'll be kind of checking in on as we move along here, but do you have any objection to the amendment?
Not at all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Seeing none, we now have substitute ordinance number 3267-2022 before us as amended. Further discussion? Councilmember Basen.
Thank you, Mayor. So had, passed my discussion with the city manager and I think he shared some of the comments that I had with email with, with the group up here. And I, I support helping the, our employees out. I think this is a, this is a proper thing for us to do. The city manager did make some changes to the, to the policy dealing with how they're going to handle this new, where, where we're at in the, in this, in this era of COVID. And I guess my only comments that I had, and, and city manager gets to make policy, but we get to fund, you know, we get to decide whether, whether, whether we fund this, this amendment or not. My only question, my only, my only concern is, is that they made some changes and I think they worked on making some good changes. One of the changes that takes place is now, and the city manager can correct me if, if I'm stating anything wrong, is, is that we do have testing available for employees. We've got, if, if an employee tests positive or they have symptoms, that's what this five days is for. So, so that way the employees can, can isolate. After the five days, one of the things that we have in the new policy is when they return is the wearing of a mask. In my opinion, that would be a mask mandate that we put on our employees. And what I'd say is that if you still have symptoms, don't show back up to work. So we're going to test, we're going to isolate. That's the whole point of us doing this. Having a mask mandate on our employees is something that I, that I would not like to see us have when it comes to this. And I'd like the city manager to maybe speak to that.
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Basen, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part. You'd just like me to make a statement about the, the policy?
Yeah, just if, if I've, if I've kind of laid it out correctly and, and the things that you've done.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Through the mayor, Councilmember Basen. So we did change the, the protocols. And as council likely recalls, at the last meeting, I talked about our incident management team meeting. And one of the primary things that we discussed was whether or not vaccinated and unvaccinated employees should be treated differently. It was a rather vigorous debate amongst the IMT. And in the end, at the time, we decided to stick strictly with CDC recommendations in, in that if an unvaccinated employee was a close contact, they would have to actually stay home for five days. If you were vaccinated and you were close contact, you could come into work, but you had to mask. After that meeting, we reconsidered it as an IMT the following week and determined that we should change that protocol to treat all employees regardless of vaccination status the same with close contacts. So right now, if you're a close contact, you can come to work, but you're required to mask for 10 days. In the case of COVID positive employees, as Mr. Basen said, they need to quarantine for five days. After a five-day quarantine, if they are symptom-free, then they can come back to work. If after five days, they're still exhibiting symptoms, they must continue to quarantine. We do have a requirement in the protocols right now that after they come back and are symptom-free, that they have to continue to wear a mask to the end of that 10-day period from when they tested positive. Yeah, and if I might add, and thank you, Scott. And, and one of the things that we did make a distinction on, which I think is important to, to mention, is that the, the mask requirement is not that they have to wear the mask during the entire day. They're only required to wear the mask when they're within six feet of others. So for example, I've been a close contact for this week. The majority of the day I don't have a mask on, but when I'm within six feet of others, I'm required to wear a mask. And that's what we ask of our employees. So it's not as onerous as wearing a mask at all times. We only require it when they're within six feet.
Thank you. Councilmember Basen?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, city manager. So I guess, you know, I just want to kind of go back. This, this body, we passed a resolution that we weren't for mandates when it comes to masks. And here, our own city is still going to mandate masks on our employees in this new environment to where they are symptom-free is the reason why they're returning back. We have testing available. We have vaccines that everybody can go get. This is never going to end. All of us in this room have been to big events, I'm sure. I've been to Walmart. I went to a school, school event with Sodatna and Kena with 500 of my closest friends. I know my, my high school kids. I'm in close contact every day. If close contact is going to continue to be an issue, we're never going to get back to normal. That's why I was, that, that's why it was important for me to, to see us put a sunset date on this also was because, again, all we're going to do is continue to bring this back. The public wants this to go away and we continue to bring this back. We're doing some good things for our, our employees. It's the right thing to do. And again, if I, if I tested and I, I had five days off and I come back, I shouldn't be here if I, if I have an issue. And wearing a mask, and again, two years ago, CDC says how great these masks were. Everybody knows now what the, what CDC, what the CDC is saying about the mask and all the different reports and how they're not appropriate to, to do anything, you know, unless you have an N95 mask and you're going to keep your distance and everything else. So we know that, that, that today, we're dealing with a different situation. Following the CDC guidelines, those are guidelines. I, I use an example when I was talking with the city manager is that, you know what, me being in the fire department, I can go over to the fire department, I can show you an entire library of guidelines that this city does not follow. And we don't follow them for a couple of different reasons. We can't afford it. We don't have the ability to follow them. So this is why we get to make these decisions. Is, is some of these guidelines may not be appropriate for the Kena in our population. And so I won't support this based on if the guidelines are going to stay, stay, stay the same, stay the same.
Any further discussion on substitute ordinance number 3267-2022 as amended? Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. For me personally, when this came forward to the body, some of the problems I had with this was there was really no defined amount of, in the COVID leave. And I wanted to know what other uses we could use the funding for. So I worked with administration and we came up with the $110,000. So there's an allocated amount because as it stated, we had 220,000 in grants. And without putting that sideboard on, we really kind of gave access to all that money. And so in the substitute ordinance, kind of fixed some of the concerns I had with putting a dollar amount. And then the remaining amount, we were wanting to do testing or therapeutics. And we had to see what would be within an allowable use. And they came back that expanding our testing would be an adequate use. So we are testing our employees. This expands it more to their families as well. We want our employees to know that their family's health and wellbeing is important to us. And when they're loading them, their whole family's up to the vehicles to go wait three hours in Capstone's parking lot, I think there's some concern with that. So really, those were some of the things I seen with this. I do understand Mr. Basen's concern on the mask. And I myself am not for forcing the mask, following the CDC guidelines at this point. I've had this conversation with the city manager. A lot of these CDC guidelines seem like we're throwing mud at the wall and trying to get it to stick. And a lot of them at this point aren't making sense. We were going to look up, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't get to relook up the CDC's page on masking. But from what I have read, they were saying that this mask, mask, cloth mask are ineffective to these new variants. And so if they're not effective, the only true safe mask to be wearing would be N95s. So if that's the case, and if we're going to have that as part of our protocol, then we need to make sure we're providing the proper mask and not cloth mask. So with that, I think we need to definitely look at that requirement and that policy as well. So that that, that's fitting the best way it can. I agree with Mr. Basen on that. I will be supporting this, but I do think our overall approach on our COVID policy needs to be looked at a little more on the mask part. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Naxton?
Thank you. I too will be supporting this. And I think like everybody in the room and probably in this country and the world would like to have COVID just go away. And I'd rather we not even have the discussion anymore. And that's what I like. And, and you know, if, if there is money left over here and the city can't use it to our best interest here in the city, I don't really have a problem with it going back to the federal government either. You know, if it's, if it's tied into specifically what we're using here and we can't use it for our city, if we're trying to find places, well, maybe, maybe it's time to, to be done with it. But I will support this and I think it will benefit our, our employees here.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Winger?
Thank you. Just to kind of go off what Mr. Naxton said, with utilizing these funds, one of my discussions with Mr. Ostrander was with the canneries ramping up and the tight restrictions that have been on our fishermen and as well as the processors, there may be a need for us to be able to reach out and see if we can help with any other testing capabilities as they've got employees coming on. Sounds like some of the canneries are operating. I know Link Cod really picks up in like the April timeframe. So that was one of my suggestions I talked with Mr. Ostrander about to additionally be able to use this money and support our community as well as our employees.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I guess I do have a question for Mr. Ostrander. So the, the $100,000, I mean, are you comfortable with those amounts as far as does this accomplish? I think, you know, sort of what you were intending to do when this came out. I mean, I don't have an objection to it. I just would like to hear from you if you feel that this is adequate funding level.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, the $110,000 is, is adequate. I'm guessing somewhat here, but I was anticipating that usage would probably be somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000 in COVID leave if, if this ordinance passed. So I So I think $110,000 is certainly sufficient. And then on the testing component, depending on what happens with the state, actually, the state still has the medium that's provided to us at no cost. As long as that's available, we won't have to utilize any of the funding for testing. However, I know the state's, the equipment that they have is fairly limited right now. And if we do end up having to purchase it, we can do that. But then we would dip into this, and the tests at that point, I think, cost $46 apiece. So, but even with that, I'm confident that the $50,000 is sufficient.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Basden?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess one more question for the city manager. So if you have an employee basically who tests, they isolate, and they come back after five days with no symptoms, and they refuse to wear a mask, are you going to fire them?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Basden, that would certainly not be what we would do. We would work with the HR director, and we would work with the supervisor and figure out what the alternative was.
Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Glenn Dunning? Any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yes, I've been listening to the discussion, and what I hear is overwhelming support for the welfare and benefit of our employees and trying to establish a positive dialogue as we go through this COVID adventure. And I will be supporting this, and thank everybody for their comments.
Thank you. Any further discussion on substitute ordinance number 3267-2022 as amended? Councilmember Petty?
A question for the city manager at this time. How many city employees do we have out with COVID?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty? I've got the list here. Current as of today, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine employees that are COVID-positive right now. So assuming we have 100 employees, that's 9% of the employees that are out COVID-positive. And we've got a total of 22. So that would be 13 employees that are in COVID protocol as close contacts. And for comparison purposes, if you look back during the course of the last 20-plus months, the most that we had prior to now in COVID protocol, I believe, was eight or nine. So this is clearly an increase that we've seen here recently.
Thank you, Mr. Ostrander. Any further discussion on substitute ordinance number 3267-2022 as amended? Seeing and hearing on, clerk, please call her on.
Vice Mayor Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Councilmember Basden?
No.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and two no votes. Ordinance, substitute ordinance number 3267-2022 as amended is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, council, we have ordinance, we're on item D2, ordinance number 3268-2022. Increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the water and sewer special revenue fund and authorizing a purchase order increase to Alaska Waste for Sludge Disposal Services at the wastewater plant. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3268-2022.
Second.
Very good. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3268-2022?
I see no hands raised and no unmuted.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll bring you back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Curtin for being here. I'm sure to answer any questions we may have on this. And I just want to say again, I think what you're doing is a great job. I mean, you're just ultimately doing a great job with this and being proactive, and you've been very good at communicating with the body. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? Councilmember Naxted?
Not to carry it on too long. I'm just curious, like, because I've forgotten, when do we expect the sledge press to be installed? It's mentioned in your memo.
Mr. Curtin through the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Actually, I got an update this week. We are still dealing with supply chain issues. However, the press does appear to be coming in July is the last round. So it's a little delayed from what my original expectations were, but not terribly so. So we're still finalizing our design documents. We're going to be releasing it for bid later this spring, and we'll have the site prepped in anticipation of it arriving. So I do expect it to be up and operational. It's a prepackaged unit, so installation will happen very quickly. So I expect it to be operational by the end of summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, deliberation, comments? Vice Mayor Glenn Dunning, you okay there?
I'm on board. Thank you.
Very good. Seeing no other deliberation, comments? Clerk, please call her on.
Councilmember Basden?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3268-2022 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, item D3, ordinance number 3269-2022. Amending Kena Municipal Code, Section 7.30.020, land sale permanent funds to identify the circumstances and limitation on the use of derivative investments and to add new, two new classes of assets to the list of authorized investments and to codify the applicable benchmark by which these asset classes will be measured and evaluated. Pleasure, council.
Second?
Was there a movement to enact? So move to enact?
Motion to enact ordinance 3269-2022.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3269-2022?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no hands raised, and I see no unmuted mics.
With that, we'll bring you back to council. Councilmember Basden?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting this. I thought the presentation was good tonight, and I'm pretty sure that our finance director also wants to probably see us move in this direction.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilmember Petty?
I will not be supporting this tonight because of the risk-reward measures that were not as robust as I would like if we're going to be utilizing derivatives inside our portfolio. Also, BlackRock is not a type of investment that I would like to see invested in because of associations with individuals that I have challenges with. And so with that being said, I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. And just for council's information here, from what I understand is that if we vote this down, then we would postpone resolution, the next item on our agenda, which is resolution number 2022. And our default ordinance would be essentially for our current investment structure. Is that, I think that's close to being accurate. So with that, just, I wanted to just throw that out so we knew where we're at. Any further comments under deliberation? Councilmember Sonar?
I'm going to ask for some clarification, and I guess I'm not sure who I'm asking this from. Maybe Mr. Eubanks, if he's still with us. I'm hearing on one side that by adding these new classes of assets, we're putting down on paper what's actually already happening in practice.
This is, this would be a vote on a new asset classes, which would allow our fiduciaries to invest in those classes. So this is a structure for, when they mentioned the 6535?
Right, right.
Those are our benchmarks. Those wouldn't change, but the asset allocations would change within those funds. Is that?
Okay. There was, it was a comment I heard tonight in the presentation that, like, the S&amp;P 500 already utilizes this procedure. And by our investments being a part of that, we are like secondary participants to these classes of assets. And now we're just putting it down in writing that we can be like a primary participant? Is that what I'm hearing?
You know, I'll defer to our finance director, and then he can defer to our, to our folks here, Ms. Nicolai and Leirman, for clarification. Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Sonar. You did pick up on, so there's a couple of different moving parts in this ordinance. The first part, you did pick up on correctly. There, you know, currently in virtually any of the investment tools or asset classes we're using right now, the use of derivatives is taking place. So this clarification regarding derivatives is just putting some sideboards on that as those uses have become more prevalent. It also became a little bit of greater importance because we are adding the alternative beta asset class, which, you know, derivatives and derivative strategies is definitely a component of that. Beyond that, what we're also doing is basically allowing two new asset classes or two new types of investments. The first one being high-yield domestic bonds. Those are bonds below investment grade. That's one asset class. And then the secondary asset class is the alternative beta asset class. So those, the policy and what's in code limits our ability or limits the different vehicles that we can invest the city's permanent fund in. And then it assigns to those different asset classes what's called a benchmark or what we will use to evaluate the performance of the fund that we've chosen to utilize for that asset class. So that's what the code section is being changed. Beyond that, what code requires is that annually by resolution, we establish the asset allocation, what percentage of each different asset class is our target, and what the applicable ranges that we provide to our investment management team that they can use in investing and managing the portfolio. So yes, you are correct that this is putting sideboards around derivatives, and that's something that is taking place currently in the portfolio. But it's also adding those two new asset classes or two new buckets that we get to invest in. And that recommendation is coming not because we're chasing yield, not because we're trying to increase the performance of the portfolio, but we're basically keeping the portfolio at the same projected earnings, but lowering the overall risk to the portfolio. So, you know, it's kind of my philosophy that we should always seek the greatest amount of return we can for a prescribed level of risk. So if we're able to maintain the same return and lower the risk, I view that as a positive also. Hope that helps.
Did that answer your question? Councilmember Sonar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. And thank you for answering that, Mr. Eubank. So my next question then would be, in, according to the chart here in the packet, if we move this direction, yes, we are limiting the potential losses we could have. And I saw on the chart, it was like 1.5 million. But at the top, we are losing the opportunity for 4.5 million.
Mr. Eubank?
Is that worth it?
Mr. Eubank?
So I'll, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Sonar. First, let me preface this by saying now you're stepping into what's my opinion. And I think this is where it's important for council to have their opinion when they vote on this. From my perspective, what you're looking at there of those absolute top and bottom ranges is where the modeling of the portfolio is looking out at two, I believe it's at two standard deviations, which encompasses about 95% of all occurrences. And that's why you see that band so wide, is because, you know, utilizing a bell curve, you're trying to predict within a certain range what's going to happen 95% of the time. So you're absolutely right. When we reduce the overall volatility of the portfolio's returns, it mutates at both the top end and it mutates at the bottom end. And again, but the overall average or expected return is to still produce the same amount of revenue, but at a lower risk. So you are, you're not incorrect in what you see.
Councilmember Basden?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess my final comment, if, my analogy would be is what we're doing for our investment group here is we're giving them a few more, a few more tools in our, within our portfolio to operate when it comes to fixed incomes, specifically with the high-yielding bonds. And, you know, we're still going to be standing in that percentage. And of course, they would love to have a crystal ball to know what the next 10 years is going to look like. And, you know, we're trying to, trying to stay within that 10-year window. And I think it just, I think it's appropriate just because of what we're trying to, you know, we're trying to give them more tools to be successful in what we're asking for.
Further discussion? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you. I'll be supporting this as well. I think it does, from my perspective anyway, give us some additional tools in a, in a more volatile situation as we're moving forward. But I guess, I do have a question, and I'm not sure exactly how to phrase it, but it has to do with the new, one of the new sections under 730020 Investments, A3, that new section there. The first sentence is about five lines long, and I read it several times, and I understand it, but I'm not a finance guy. And words matter. And I've just, even though I think I understand it, perhaps what I'm asking is perhaps it can be stated in more layman's terms for people like me, I'm just an engineer, you know, to understand a little better. Conservative posture, I wouldn't use the word posture, but posture must have a word in finance to put that in code. I'm not suggesting removing anything. I just don't know why some of that, then. Enhanced exposure, embedded leverage. It kind of, there's a lot of that stuff in there. And perhaps through the city manager, that could be, just, this sentence could be restated to us in layman's terms, what that means.
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Naxted, yeah, I can do that for you. I'm kidding. I cannot do it for you. There's no way I can do that. I think Brandy did try to simplify it a little bit earlier in the presentation, and maybe Terry could take a shot at it. I guess I'd pass it over to Terry first, see what your thoughts are, if you need to punt to APCM.
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Naxted. I would like to defer to either Brandy or Vinay probably to take this one on. They definitely helped me with the language. I do understand that it probably does have more of the finance-type language in it. Not sure how to get away from a lot of that and still accomplish what we're trying to, but I'll let maybe Brandy take a stab at it if she could.
Brandy, could you come up so we could hear you on the microphone, please? Thank you.
So I absolutely agree. I think that some of the words in there are not finance-related, but they're just created. Like posture is not something that we regularly use in finance, so it doesn't have a specific... So it doesn't have a specific meaning within our industry. So I think there are some words like that that we could modify. I do think that it is a fair challenge to try to take things like embedded leverage and explain it in more layman's terms. I would be up to the challenge though, but at this hour, I'd probably need a little bit more time for reflection. But I, I do think it could be possible that we make an intro to the language so that every day citizens could have some concept of what was happening before we get into the more technical language.
Councilmember, I do have a quick question while I got you here. So does exposure, and this was something I just sort of thought, just kind of came to me here. So is this exposure must be net long at all times? Does that inhibit your ability to react at all to that particular component of our portfolio?
No, it limits the amount of risk exposure in terms of what we have exposure to in the fund. And so I think it's a very important, and that was a very intentional request to have that in there. So when, when we're saying you have to be net long all the time, that means at the end of the day, the, the fund that we're utilizing can't, cannot be in a position where they sold something that they cannot cover or that they do not own. Because that can happen when you're utilizing these types of complex strategies. The importance of that particular language we're recommending to all of our clients because if APCM wasn't managing these positions, you're, a new manager could be in a position where they're increasing risk in the portfolio. And our intention is to utilize net long and reducing the amount of leverage in the exposures as part of policy.
Very good. Councilmember Petty.
So in my experience, when you add high yield into your portfolio, that increases your risk. Also, 10% of this is going to go into that, that alternative beta. So does alternative beta have less risk than high yield?
The risk characteristics in, in the alternative beta strategies that we're utilizing and we're recommending under these guidelines do have a risk profile lower than the equity market. So you could see that from a historical performance perspective in, for example, the COVID crisis that I summarized in the presentation. I do absolutely agree with you that high yield increases the risk of the portfolio. So you can note in the slide where we're saying where we'd fund it from, it's coming from equities as well. And so, as I mentioned, our viewpoint on high yield is that it's a risky asset, just as it is, just as equities are. And, but we do know that high yield bonds are further up in the capital structure than an equity asset class. And so we consider it the least risky of the risky assets.
But according to the alternative beta, where does that fall? Because we're talking about futures, forwards, options, and swaps.
So alternative beta in the strategies that we're utilizing have a risk profile that is less than equities, but more than bonds. And it has a return profile or projection that has a return higher than bonds, and certainly a lot less than equities.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on ordinance number 3269-2022? Questions? Thank you, Ms. Nicolai. I think we might be getting through this. Vice Mayor Glenn Denning, did you have anything?
No, I'm satisfied with the dialogue and, and thank you for the information.
So yeah, I guess I could just weigh in here a little bit. I think when I, I was a little bit concerned too when I sort of, you know, saw this. I mean, it's not concerned because I think we do have good fiduciaries. I mean, you guys are out there sort of, you know, running, you know, ran wild here with our, with our permanent funds. But I would just like to note that we do revisit this every year. This is something that, and I suppose we could even call a, a special meeting at some point in the year if we wanted, if it was, rose to that level of concern. So I guess at this point, I, you know, if a recommendation that our fiduciaries are making here, I'm okay with it and maybe looking at it at long-term if there's a specific, and I imagine a lot of these reactive markets down, all down or all up, right? I mean, if we have good markets, well, the fund overall is going to do well. And if things go tank, then they're going to probably not do as quite as well. So I guess for me, I'm, I'm wanting to probably just take a look at this for a year and see how the, see how that plays out to maybe hedge against the risk side, just because of volatility. With that, any more discussion or comments? Councilmember Naxted?
Okay. Sorry, I just tend to be one of those detail guys. If, if our finance guy, Terry, is happy with the language that I was just talking about that's in there and that really fits the, the need, I'm satisfied with that. I don't think I actually got confirmation that that's the best way to go, but maybe we'll change it in a year or not, you know. But I'd like to have confirmation that, again, that, that's appropriate.
Mr. Eubank, are you satisfied with the language under 7.30020A3?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Naxted. Yes, I am. And I, I do think, and I have, I will take Councilmember Naxted's comments certainly into consideration when crafting these things more in the future. You know, as, as an individual with a finance degree, you know, it certainly made sense to me. But for me, I think at this point, it's probably, because of the 30-day delay for, before this ordinance can become effective, we really won't be able to roll the implementation of this, of these two new asset classes into play until probably, you know, early March. I would not want to delay this to rewrite that paragraph and make some minor vocabulary changes, but I certainly am hearing what you're saying and, and will work harder in the future to, to not make it make so much sense to me and make it more sense for, for, for others.
Thank you. Any further discussions, comments, deliberation? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Stoner?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
No vote. Can I abstain?
No, you can vote. It's, yours is advisory, so.
Oh, okay. Then, yes.
You, you, no one holds you responsible for it.
I don't want to.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I certainly appreciate your candor there for sure, for sure.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Councilmember Basden?
Yes.
We have six yes, one no. Ordinance 3269-2022 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have Resolution Number 2022-08, Designate the Investment and Allocation Plan for the City's Permanent Funds and Establishing Appropriate Benchmarks to Measure Performance for Calendar Year 2022. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-08?
I see no hands raised.
Seeing none, bring it back to council.
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2022-08 is adopted. So that brings us next down to action approval, Item G7, Confirmation of Mayoral Nomination for Appointment to Many Grants Steering Committee. Pleasure, council.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to approve your mayor nomination appointment for many grants steering committee.
And sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned Ms. Sarah Dothett.
Of Ms. Sarah Dothett.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry.
Second request, unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection to the appointment of Ms. Sarah Dothett to the many grants steering committee? Seeing and hearing none, that action is, is approved. Next up, we have Item G8, Discussion Request to Schedule a Council Work Session for the Draft Land Management Plan. Mr. Ostrander, are you looking for some timeframe? And how much time should we set aside for this?
Yeah. Is, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So as far as actually the length of the meeting itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would think that we should slot a couple hours. And, you know, if it goes a little bit beyond that, it'd be fine. You know, if it goes to three hours or more, we could likely schedule a second work session. I, I'm not certain that, I don't know how many recommendations we're going to have or recommended amendments we're going to have from council. It could be that we, that we can get through it in, in one work session or it may require a couple. The one thing I would say in addition to what's in the memo that I provided for this item is that February 24th is actually no longer an option. That is going to be the visioning, community visioning meeting for the Kenai Waterfront Feasibility Study at the Chamber that night. So we're now limited to the 15th, 22nd, and 28th for options.
Yes. Okay, so let me.
Can you say those dates again, Paul?
February 15th, February 22nd, and February 28th. And if necessary, we could move into March as well. It just, we were anticipating that we'd have this in February. If those dates don't, do not work for council, we could consider March as well.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
I would like to just bring to notice that Vice Mayor Glenn Denning will be traveling back on the 17th, so he would not be there for the 15th. And I'm not sure 22nd would give him, and he can speak for himself. We've had this conversation at a quick time. And I was just wondering if we were going to get a compiling list of all of the recommendations from the other commissions to be able to go through all their recommendations prior to our work session.
Okay. Yeah, let's maybe dial in on the date and time first and then we'll go refer to sort of the substance, okay? If that makes sense. So the 28th, I think, is that's what I'm hearing?
I'd actually work.
Okay, so you may be back. That sounds like it'll work for.
They'll be back the day before.
And that'll give, today's Groundhog's Day, so that gives everybody almost a full month to rehash, refamiliarize yourself with the land management plan. So I'll throw out a date and time to 28th at 5:00 PM and, and see where that goes.
I would be unavailable. I'll be in Phoenix.
Okay.
I have prior commitments that day. My schedule's very full. I was really kind of hoping to maybe throw out the date of Monday, March 7th.
I might have, I've got Board of Fish meeting in Anchorage that I always like to attend, but they're statewide board meeting, but I'm not sure exactly what the dates are on that.
Could we look at the 22nd of February?
That was a conflict with Councilmember Basen, I think. Is that correct?
The, well, it says 28th.
Or not Basen, but Vice Mayor Glenn Denning.
Well, that's not a certain thing. He's supposed to be back on the 17th.
Hey, guys. In the March works for me.
There's a 22nd of March, or 20?
I said March 7th. Somebody else gave February 22nd as.
For me.
Okay.
February 22nd.
Okay, so that's, that's out. So basically, all of March is out. Is that where we're at?
February.
Or, all of, all of February is out, so. I, yeah, so that's clunked, stuck to my head right now. So that gets like Groundhog's Day, right?
What about March 3rd?
Shelley, could I get you to look up Board of Fish statewide meeting, their, their meeting schedule for their statewide meeting?
Will it be, will it be on Zoom or videoed where if one of us can't be there, we can always watch it? In case you can't get us all together?
Shelley, were you planning on zooming this, that one?
We can make Zoom available.
Through the mayor. So is, is Zoom then safe so we can watch it if we don't, if we can't participate?
Yeah. Thank you, through the mayor. Yes, we can record the Zoom meeting.
If that's the case, March 7th, I'm, I'm okay with, because I, I can go on any, yes.
There is a Harbor Commission meeting at 6:00 PM on the 7th. We can move them if necessary.
March 7th, 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM? What do you, what do you guys think?
Five.
Five?
Five works for me.
Okay. So let's go with, yeah, let's go with March 7th, 5:00 PM. Mr. Ostrander, is that?
Yeah, that should work.
Okay. Very good. And I, well, I'm sure we'll be getting reminders to put that on our, on our calendar there. So thank you. Next up, we have Commission Committee Reports, Council on Aging.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Yeah, we got the Council of Aging. I'm in God's waiting room. It's time for cookies and milk. It's quite late here. So if you'll allow me, I'll, I'll leave now.
Yes, I, I understand. And, and I hope you're doing well. And thoughts for you there, Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Thank you much. Yeah, the surgeon was, was, was happy with the procedure and I'm told I'm doing well. So we'll, we'll work through this. And again, thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. So H1 Commission Committee Reports, Council on Aging.
Thank you, Mayor. No report. Next meeting is February 10th.
Thank you. Airport Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. No report. The next meeting, if I'm looking at it correctly, is February 10th.
Very good. Harbor Commission?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's no report. And our next meeting is February the 7th. And Mr. Naxted will be covering for me. Thank you.
Oh, very good. Parks and Recreation Commission?
Thank you. Parks and Rec will be meeting for a work session to go over the budget on February 17th.
Very good. Planning and Zoning Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Planning and zoning met on the 26th in Chamber. There was election of the chair and the vice chair. At that time, they elected Jeff Twite as chair and Alex Dothett is vice chair for planning and zoning. They heard from Mr. Faulkner about the Kenai Home Port project and just gave a good overview. I unfortunately attended this meeting via Zoom. So there's a little, a lot of the people weren't talking in their microphones, so it was very sporadic on what I picked up on my end. So I'll try to relay through the rest of it best I can. There were some plots that were considered and approved by the body. And what these were, were Kenai C government lots that they were ultimately just combining their plots. Both had been approved. There was another one, Kenai C as well, that they had a, they, they as well had a replat and it looked like they were wanting to get rid of, and I'm sorry, I know Mr. Ostrander was there, so I'm going to lean on you a little. Was it 20 feet on each end that they were wanting to vacate? There was a little concern by members. wanting to vacate? There was a little concern by members on doing that in case there was a future need of access, as well as just overall concern about first responders and snow plowing, where we would be able to maintain or plow the snow, those concerns. It didn't seem to be a concern by the city or Public Works, and they were very comfortable. And so they did approve that. They did put through, I think it was about eight different recommendations on the city's Kenai Land Management Plan. The, one of the ones that seemed to be the most split will be the Lot and Acres Flower, Flowerfield. There seemed to be a lot of comments and concerns regarding that one, and I'm sure we will see that as coming to the body. And as far as their next meeting will be on, where are we? The 23rd of February. Are we past that? No, we're not. There we go. Sam lost.
Yeah, same problem, same problem I had. Thank you. Next up, we have Beautification Committee?
No report.
Thank you, Ms. Sonar. Mini Grant Steering Committee have no report. On report of the mayor, just wanted to say that we did have our first Last Goodbye Catch Review Task Force meeting last Friday, which was an introductory meeting. Everybody got to introduce themselves. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 11th. We're fleshing out our, our agenda right now, which hopefully will be posted by Friday, but that would be starting around 9:00 AM and journeying around 4:00 PM with staff reports, agency reports, and public testimony. So kind of excited to see how, how this goes. I did spend, I got invited to spend an hour on KDL this morning for, they call it Kenai Conversations, I think they do every Wednesday, from, from 10 to 11. So basically discussed all things Kenai and all things fishing. It was a, one of my favorite subjects, this fishing, so that was a great conversation. I know, and I, I know why Marion's here, is that we've got the PLL rollout tomorrow at 5:00 to 7:00. So I'm, I'm planning on being there for that. Maybe not ready at 5:00, but sort of thereafter. And then we have a Sea Belt meeting on tourism tomorrow at, at 11 o'clock, a Zoom meeting. So just wanted to say, Super Bowl coming up before our next meeting, so everybody enjoys the, a good Super Bowl, hopefully. And with that, I'll go to Administration Report. City Manager, Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. First, I wanted to make sure that I pointed out to council that in your packet under the City Manager's report is a letter from Todd Stone, and they are distributing 10% of their revocable trust to the Kenai Animal Shelter. So I did talk to Mr. Stone and thanked him in person, and we're going to write a letter thanking him for that as well. Like I said, they lived here for a number of years, adopted a couple of cats from the shelter, and, and really had a soft spot for them. So don't know what this means for the animal shelter, but it was certainly a generous donation on their part, so I wanted to make sure I pointed that out to council. I got an update on the Kenai multipurpose facility. As council likely recalls, there's some issues with the facility and, and the roof there. We've got pitting and, and some, it's not mold, but there's pitting, and some of the paint has been removed, and we need to go in and, and, and we need to remove all that old paint and repaint it. The engineers' report specifically stated that there was likely only a couple of years left for the structural integrity of that if we didn't take care of it. Because of the work we have to do this summer, we're not going to have summer ice in the facility this year. We are continuing to look at the long-term viability of the facility as it's currently being used. And actually, Mr. Curtin is here, and he could probably speak to this if there are additional questions. But we're going to continue to analyze the use of that facility, both how it's being used in the winter and in the summer, to make sure that it does remain viable for long-term. Don't know what that means yet, but as far as short-term, summer ice will not be in, because we need that time to, to take care of the facility this summer. What that looks like going forward, we're going to continue to look at it. I know several people have mentioned Brittany left the chamber. I just wanted to thank her for her time at the chamber. She was great to work with. The relationship between the city and the chamber is, is as strong as it's been since I've been here, and it's a large part of the work that she did. So I thank her for her work when she was with the chamber. ACS has been meeting with the City of Kenai, also the City of Saldana, and the Borough for six months at least, talking about the possibility of mounting some of their equipment, their antenna equipment on light poles in, within the City of Kenai. They are bringing a mesh network, a wireless mesh network with these antennas. They're saying that they could provide speeds up to one gig to the area, which in certain areas of the city you can already get, but there are other areas of the city where you cannot. It's, it's been a long discussion, because there's a couple of questions that we have about this installation. The first is exclusivity of that. You know, if they put those antennas up, it's in an unlicensed band. Are there other wireless internet providers that could also coexist with those? Don't have a really strong answer for that yet. Trying to figure out exactly what the cost would be to the city. There's going to be some administrative costs for sure, but are there going to be also some type of maintenance costs that we're going to incur as well? We, we don't have our arms around that as, as well. And the third part is, what is going to be the, the true benefit to the residents of the city? And so those are the three questions that we're trying to answer. We're going to continue to work with them. I had a meeting with them earlier this week. They're really excited to do this. But again, there's questions surrounding it that we need to get answered before we go down any path and, and before council would, would have any sort of agreement in front of you to consider. We did have our first in-person meeting today with McKinley Group on the waterfront feasibility study, as I said, when you guys were scheduling your work session for the land management plan. The community visiting, visioning meeting is scheduled for February 24th, 4th, at the Visitor Center. We're going to send out notice, postcards to all the landowners in the area. We're going to also provide posts on social media and possibly other places. We want to make sure that we're going to grow participation in that first community meeting as much as possible. So I'm excited to see how, so that turns out. The discussion today was really good. The, the process they had to get feedback from the community, I think is going to be really engaging and, and interesting to watch. And the last thing is the bluff, so design continues on that. You know, we're still moving forward, should, should see completion of that in middle of the year. I did get a call from Bruce Sexhour today, who is the, is the lead project manager at the Alaska District. And he said, in reviewing our project, that participation in the National Flood Insurance Program is needed, because this is a flood, this is in the flood zone, this project. So participation in the NFIP is needed. Most of the communities within the Borough are, are participating in the NFIP. It's run out of the Kena River Center at the Borough. The city has not participated in in the past. We've had some discussions with the Borough about doing it, and the primary reason is so little of the city actually is impacted by the floodplain. There's a few parcels in the Beaver Creek area, a few others on Beaver Loop Road that potentially are impacted, but the impacts are pretty small, so the benefits of participating in the program have been, at least from our perspective, limited. But participation is required to get the funding from the core for the project. So I'll be bringing an ordinance forward. It's going to take an ordinance for consideration by a council. You have to say, yes, we want to participate in the program. Then I have to work with the Borough to get us into that program. So that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer questions. Or like I said, if you want to talk about the multipurpose facility, Mr. Curtin's here to answer those.
Just as a follow-up, could we have Ms. Seener send out invites to council for the, for the riverfront visioning? Should we put that on our calendars? Thank you. Councilmember Bazin?
Thank you, Mayor. So, so two questions for the City Manager, maybe through Scott. First, I'm dealing with the multipurpose facility. I remember back in the day, it was three phases that was, that it was going to be built as, and we did phase one, whenever we did to do phase two or phase three. And then I also remember we were having issues with condensation, and they sprayed, I can't remember what they sprayed on the, on the structural beams. Was, is that some of the problem that we're dealing with too? Is, was, is that causing issue, the material that we used on those beams?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Bazin, I would defer to Mr. Curtin.
Mr. Curtin.
Thank you, Mr. Ostrander. Mr. Mayor Council, Councilman Bazin. So the bulk of, of the situation really with the multipurpose facility is, we're, we're using the facility in a way that it was never intended to be used for. So that structure, when it was built, it was built to be an open-air, you know, environment, year-round. And we're trying to turn it into a, essentially a year-round facility. We're adding heat to it in the wintertime. That, that structure was not designed or, you know, with the intent of, of being a conditioned space. As a result, you know, there's no insulation, for example. So we, you know, none, none of that's in, in that environment. So when, when you, when you start to use the building in a, in a way, that's what's causing the problems. So we're, we're creating all of this condensation based on how we're using that facility. And, and condensation, typical with really any structure, is very detrimental to the building. Doesn't matter if it's steel, doesn't matter if it's wood. In this case, it's, it's, it's been causing significant rusting of the facility for, for many, many years. So one of, you know, over the last few years, you know, we've been evaluating it. We had Nelson Engineering come out and put eyes on it. We actually went up, I power washed, you know, the roof system to kind of really see what we were dealing with. And they kind of, you know, evaluated that system. So, you know, we have some funding right now that we're going to put, you know, a coating on the, the roof supports to, to try and slow down that rust, and then some funding to put a, an exhaust fan in, actually, to, to move some of the air. I don't know how, I can't tell you today how effective that's going to be. So, you know, our intent is to put a fan in, and it's going to help, but I can't tell you it's going to solve 100% of the condensation problems based on how it's being used today. I think, I think it's going to improve it, but I don't know that it's going to be enough, you know, to really allow the continued use of how we're using it today, long-term, for the building. So what, what I would really appreciate council doing, and it's nothing that we need to figure out necessarily today, but if, if the goal, if, if our goal is to have year-round ice here in the city, we, we likely need to be considering a new structure and not that structure. And it's not to say that that structure can't be used for something else, but it would likely cost me every bit as much money to try and make that structure into something that's capable of doing that, as it would to just build a brand-new structure adjacent to it. It would literally cost that much money, in my opinion.
Thank you. Can I follow up?
Yes, follow up.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't, I don't think it was originally built, my memory may be felony, it wasn't originally built to be a 365-day hockey rink.
No.
It was built to be multipurpose, which I think the ice would, would go out in the summertime. And, and it was originally, the, the plan that I remember looking at was three phases to where it, it would have been enclosed at some point. Of course, it's all about funding, and the funding that was available, so that's why it probably stopped at, at the level that it's at. So that's my, my memory of it. But, but thanks. I, I know you got, that's going to be a big issue to have to deal with that. And then my second question for the City Manager, if you would, Paul, you and I had some conversations in your office, just dealing with the dog park. If you would maybe, just if you could add, add to your report, maybe once a month, just to kind of give us a little update on how things are going there too, if you don't mind?
Yeah, through the mayor, Councilmember Bazin. Yeah, certainly, I can do that. And I will just give you a report now. You know, there hasn't been a lot of movement since the money was appropriated, but it is a project now on our capital project list. And in talking with the dog park folks, waiting for the spring thaw, so we can really get our eyes on it and figure out what we've got, is the first major step to, to figuring out what the next steps are. After that, we will be looking to support them in whatever way we can to get essentially what is phase one done. And then after that, we'll work with them to establish the scope for phase two, which is where that appropriation would be used, which is when lighting and cameras and water would be potentially added, and some ADA improvements, things like that. So, but I will absolutely provide you an update at each meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Nexted, Councilmember Nexted.
Thank you. Answered to both. Thank you. Paul, two questions back to the bluff. When are the 65% drawings due about? And the other one has to do with the flood program. Is, is this a one-time temporary thing we're going to do, or is we're going to actually enter the program permanently?
Mr. Ostrander?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Nexted. As far as NFIP, and if it's temporary, I literally got the call at like 4:50 today, so I don't know yet on, on what that entails. So I don't know. As far as 65% drawings, March, April timeframe, I believe. Is that accurate, Scott?
Yeah, I believe we're looking at about 60 days. So the core is still going through their process on 35%, so we incorporate those comments, and we have a value engineering piece that we have to do. So a lot of it's core-dependent on getting their participation, but on 60 days?
Thank you. Councilmember Ware?
Thank you. I wasn't able to speak with administration ahead of the meeting on this one, so I'm sorry to kind of throw this out there. But I noticed that the U.S. Forestry is offering a grant program out to entities and cities for removal of choke cherry trees. I'd be happy to pass that information on. I know it's been a conversation within Parks and Recs, but they're looking at giving $10,000 grants out for the combating and the removal of choke cherry trees. I know that's something that they've been proactive on, but if there's grant funds that could assist in maybe the removal and replanting of non-invasive trees, it might be something I'd be happy to pass on to look at.
Thank you. Councilmember Petty?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ostrander, on that ACS wireless mesh network, is that 4G, 5G, sir?
Mr. Ostrander?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Petty. So it, it's not a cellular network. It's a Wi, it's essentially a Wi-Fi network. It's actually 60 gigahertz is the bandwidth that it operates in. So, you know, 4G, 5G is the cellular network, which is actually a licensed spectrum. This is unlicensed, available for anyone to operate in. So it would be a different network, other than what you see with your cellular phones.
Any further questions of the City Manager? Seeing none, we'll go to City Attorney, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, members of council. I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of the City Attorney? Seeing none, we'll move to the City Clerk, Ms. Seener.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just a note that the Council on Aging is having a difficulty filling their body. So working with Director Romaine and Attorney Bloom this week, we've drafted some bylaw amendments that would allow their membership to drop below, that will be presented to the body next week at their meeting, and if they recommend approval, it'll be brought back for council's final opinion on it. We're aiming for the February 16th meeting.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Seener? Councilmember Ware?
Thank you. Thank you, Shelley. I just seen in your memo for the Planning and Zoning Commission vacancy, it stated that we posted the vacancy on January 31st, and the deadline for candidates would be February 9th. Are we normally that small in a window to apply?
Thank you through the mayor. If we get no applicants, we'll extend it, but our code is, is very specific on the advertising being during the same week in the publication, but we posted it sooner than that, and then the deadline being seven days before appointment. So we put it out there. Again, if we get none, we'll advertise again. And I've seen in the past where I've advertised vacant until filled and keep, keep running the advertisements. However, our code is very specific on how we advertise vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Seener? Seeing none, we'll move to additional public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Ms. Nelson?
I was walking my dogs. I've got my ice bugs on. I'm going to trip on this carpet tonight. A little excitement. Marion Nelson, President of the Board of Directors for the Kenai Arts Center. And yes, as Mayor Brian said, tomorrow night is our, it's our first Thursday opening for the show this month, which is an all-print show. That means lithographs, block prints, et cetera, et cetera. And this is the first time that we will have had a print- And this is the first time that we will have had a print show. There's even woodcuts from some folks in Fairbanks that are enormous and colorful and beautiful. So, it's it is a lot of surprises in it. There's even some printing, lithograph printing that's been done on some pottery. So, there's a lot of things to see on the wall all around the gallery. But then in the back, you know, the jail, the jail, the jail, the jail. The jail looks pretty good. Looks better than it ever, ever has. There's a cot in there. There's even a pillow. There's wanted posters on the wall, wanted Picasso, wanted this, wanted that. So, it's set up to have a lot of fun. We'll have a four-piece musical group there that knows some jail music. And I'm sure you can think of Johnny Cash and go from there. And, uh, as well as food and 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. and everybody's welcome and they'll have a good time welcoming the jail and the pale jail ale that Kenai River Brewery has whipped up, whipped up for us, brewed for us and for you all, for all of us, and supposedly it tastes pretty good. So, we'll see how it all works out. The label on the j- on the pale ale can was created by Alex Riddensky, our executive director. And I have to say it, it's just downright beautiful. And that is also on the T-shirts on the back. What else? It will be available. We're not gonna be selling, uh, beer, of course, in the arts center. We will be, we'll have it on hand tomorrow night because people from Kenai River Brewery will be there to facilitate that. But from then on, it'll be available at Joe's as well as Kenai River Brewery in Soldana. So, win-win. We'll make a little money on it and, uh, have a good time tomorrow night to launching this month's meeting or program, show, sorry. And here's some, uh, schedules for this year.
Well, uh, T-shirts be available for purchase?
Certainly are. Certainly are. They're all stacked up and ready to go tonight.
Very cool. Yeah. Very cool graphics, yeah.
They're black, they're short-sleeved, and they have this gorgeous graphic that's on the back as well as whatever it says on the front. I don't remember. Um, very, very attractive. We'll go on from there too. We will have bigger and better hoodies and so forth, but right now it's the beer shirt.
And do you do you have the key for the jail?
Boy, there's no lock on it.
Oh, okay.
No problem.
Just wanna make sure.
Oh, we also, you know, when we were redoing the walls in that old back room, the, what we now call the workshop room, it has new drywall on it and so forth and so on. So, in that process, we uncovered this, that block wall, which is what most of that, that those walls are. And here, I think I've told you this before, but here are the numbers, you know, up to about five feet up to, what? Seven feet maybe, that were there for mug shots. We had no idea they were there. Like, how come we knew all of this about this place and had never seen those? So, it's light blue lines and the numbers. And now we have a couple of footprints right in front of that, those numbers and a camera icon on the wall. So, it tells you what to do. Stand in front of the numbers, see if you, see if you fall within those measurements and, uh, you know, bring your camera. It's probably the few times in your life, one time in your life, you can have your picture taken in front of a jail cell, in a jail cell, or trade around with whoever's got your camera.
Do you have the little numbers to hold up to?
We have, no, Brian, you bring those, okay?
Okay.
We have the wanted posters that we have, which are great. And incidentally, there is a business, I have to say it's a relatively new business, uh, with Kelly Connect in Soldana, that, um, they were able to make these very large posters for us, you know, kind of like movie theater poster size. So, it's wanted Picasso, wanted Toulouse Luttreck, and wanted a few others. And, uh, it just makes it more fun too.
You got any questions of, um, Ms. Nelson? Councilmore, next then.
Thank you. Looking forward to tomorrow night. Thank you.
Good.
It's on my calendar. And and all the things you do down there, I mean, I go to these once a month, but I I'm there in between times too. And and actually, I took a relative in that was actually visiting Alaska in wintertime. And, uh, you knew about that. You know everything. But anyway, took him back to the jail and all that kind of stuff. But I want to say that I think that the investment that the city put into that building is was was, uh, well-placed. And it's it's a building that's being well-used by quite a lot of people. And, uh, you're using it to its maximum, I think.
We've had a couple of workshops in the last month, and we have more coming right along. That back room is definitely going to be used pretty steadily for workshops. And, uh, it's it's not the easiest room to use for a workshop, but it's about 500% easier than it was. So, uh, we really appreciate it. And of course, looking for, looking for more, I won't deny that. Looking for more, better. Also, I'll happy to hear the update on the rink. I was involved with the rink at the high school in at its inception and, uh, and before when it was the arena. There wasn't really an arena on the other side of the school. So, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Always interested in what's going on with hockey.
Deutschland- Deutschlander rink.
Yeah.
Which was named after Principal, where they're Mr. Deutschlander, but right in the middle of the windiest part of the, so I remember skating one way was really
Bad.
Bad. Skating the other way was really good, you know?
And the lights for the rink were the car lights from the people, parents, et cetera, lined up all around that arena. And Bob Bird was the coach then, is the first officially hired coach, as opposed to all the Gabriel hired volunteers before that.
Yep. You have a good memory.
Colorful, colorful days.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
You bet.
Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time?
I see no hands raised or unmuted mics.
Okay, with that, we'll go to council comments. Uh, let's start with the council member next then.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. We we had what I think was truly a blizzard the other day. It kind of matched, made all the all the requirements of one. And I thought that the city maintenance did a really good job in the cleanup all around. Beaver Loop was kind of partially drifted and you guys were on it pretty quickly and and working that night and and everything. And certainly wasn't everywhere, but, uh, it, uh, it required, it came quickly and, uh, it was cleaned up pretty quickly. So, thank you for that. Did you have something you wanted?
Very much. Thank you.
Yeah. And, uh, let's see, uh, I've got mating trees and I kind of like them. But if Parks wants to come take them out, good luck. And, uh, uh, since Mayor mentioned, he was on KDLL this week or today. I I I did it last week.
Yep.
Did you hear that? You heard that? Yeah. Great, great fun too, you know, talking about aviation safety. And well, the Kenai Airport was mentioned because it's it's a real airport. It's a, it's a year-round, 24-hours-a-day runway that you can use. And they had the same problems that streets had, except they're out there constantly trying to keep it open. But, uh, anyway, that was a lot of fun. And lastly, uh, Happy Groundhog's Day, if that's a a day to celebrate.
Council.
Only six more weeks of winter too, so woo-hoo.
Councilmember Beazin.
Thanks, Mayor. Not not nothing really to add. I I did get a text dealing with Kenai High School sports. Silas, are you gonna be giving any update? Or you want me to give a little bit on hockey? And do you have that on your list?
All I wrote about hockey, the hockey team's going to state, so.
Okay. Yep. Hockey's going to, Kenai, Kenai Central High School's going to state. I think they, I think they're number-two seed. Um, if, I think they're number-two seed.
I believe so. I was told on the radio that they got eighth place for the, um, the entire state.
Yeah. Um, and we've got, um, I think junior varsity's going up for basketball for the rally in the valley. And, um, varsity's going down to Homer. So, a lot of sports going on. Didn't want to take it away from you, but I just got a text about it. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, where?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Um, during my commission report, I did, um, forget to mention that Mr. Springer did give his resignation. And I would just like to thank Mr. Springer for his years of service to our city. And I apologize I didn't give that during my report. I too would like to thank Rhodes and Scott for your guys' efforts through the snowstorm. And, um, just an extra special thanks, um, they've been working to clean up one of the elementary schools' bus stop areas that's really just in a bad, dangerous spot. And, um, uh, working with Paul and him working with Scott, they were able to get out and remove the snow. And I just want to say thank you. Families really appreciate you guys, um, making the extra effort to keep the kids safe. The Dog Park Raffle, I turned in my raffle tickets today. Um, the Dog Park Raffle will be drawn on the 9th. So, keep an eye out if you bought any tickets to see if you would win one of their many awesome prizes. Um, they're still working hard on raising funds for the community dog park. I also want to add, um, for youth sports, I'd like to say congratulations to the Kenai Peninsula Piranha Swim Team. Um, the Kenai Piranha Swim Team is a club team. Uh, they just went to, um, seniors in Sitka. We had, I think we brought seven swimmers with us. And today they released a tool where we could get on and look at our swimmers and see kind of where they're ranking in the state, both state-level completely and our South Central level. And, um, just looking at my son's age brackets, you know, out of eight kids, the Piranas have six of those eight spots. So, they're definitely turning out just, um, an amazing amount of talented swimmers. And I just want to say good luck to all of them as they're continuing with their season. I also seen that the Job Shadow Program's going on. Are you gonna talk about that, Silas?
Um, I currently do not have anything written on it, but I do know that it is happening.
Yes. So, the Job Shadow Program, I think, is an amazing program. I would like to honestly see it expanded to both junior and senior levels because I think their ambitions change between that junior, oh, this sounds really great. And then senior going, oh, huh, maybe I really don't want to do that. But the Job Shadow Program, if you, um, have an entity, a business, um, that you would like to sign up, you can then get a student and they shadow you for the day and kind of get an understanding of what that field might entail. A lot of the times, you can tell them what type of educational requirements they can have and kind of start putting that seed in so that they can start looking at what they'll need to do to get into that perspective field. So, they are looking at people to sign up for the Job Shadow Program. And then I I just want to say thanks to Ms. Ralston. I know she's really busy. Ms. Ralston is really like the glue that holds the elementary school together at Mountain View. She does, I mean, she was talking about the bike rodeo. She does a huge hun- hundreds day celebration. She did Groundhog's Day. She dresses up as Cat in the Hat and does Green Egg and Ham and reads Cat and Hat books to the kids on Dr. Seuss Day. She just goes all out for the students. As she talked about the bike rodeo, I really hope that we can get more people to volunteer and support that. The bike rodeo is truly an amazing thing. I'm honored, Vice Mayor Glenn Dinning and I both donated $500 last year to their bike rodeo. And what that did was that established a fund that they did not have for helmets. And as you heard her talk about, there was a kid that literally came in with a duct-taped-together helmet. And we looked at it and we're like, no. And we were able to pull it off and just put a brand-new helmet on that kid. And then there were kids that rode their bikes to school that didn't have helmets, and they're not allowed to ride their bikes home. So, then they had extra helmets that they were able to fit for a kid. So, they're not having to call parents to come pick up little Johnny and his bike. They're able to safely go off. And I look forward to seeing how we'll be able to continue to partner and grow that program. And it wouldn't really be possible without our police department partnering. They're really the key aspect to the bike rodeo. Just want to end about talking about schools. We heard some of the talk about what it requires to volunteer in the school. And I heard a little scuffs and a few little laughs. That's what it sounds like when we talk about our mandates to everybody. Um, there's scuffs, there's laughs. I fought, disagree with mandatory masking. Mountain View had a two-week masking protocol. They reevaluated it and extended it an additional two weeks. They're gonna look at it again February 15th. What this does is it leaves 100 kids not going to school because they're not gonna force their kids to wear a mask for eight hours out of the day. And for a month straight, at least 100 kids are missing out of informal classroom education. And I think that this this just needs to stop at this point. It's not something I support. It's not something I usually talk about, um, at this level. But as far as it's happening in our city, in our schools, in our city, and it should leave some concern that, um, the school district is not handling their policies. You heard us talking about the policy. I do not think the school district is handling their policies well. And there's nothing okay about kids missing out on chunks of their education. And that is all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Um, yeah, and just as a follow-up for the, uh, for Bob Springer, who is our our planning zoning, um, commissioner who's retired. We were gonna have him here this evening to give him a, present him with a certificate of appreciation. He wasn't feeling well, so we're gonna try to get him here for the next meeting. So, uh, Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Scott for the snow removal and snow cleaning. Now that I'm part of the council sitting up here, I really notice the sidewalks now as I drive through town. It's like, oh, yeah, that one's good. We're good to go. So, thank you for that. Recently, I was down in Florida helping with my father, and I want to thank everybody who sent warm wishes and prayers and thoughts. I appreciate it. It was it was a good trip and I'm glad I went. And, um, while I was down there, I had one evening that I was able to spend with extended family in this quaint little city on the St. John's River. It's called Green Cove Springs, Florida. And since I don't get to see these family members very often, and I was only there for like two and a half hours because I had to get back to my, um, laptop to do the meeting here two weeks ago, they took me to, um, a restaurant, which happened to be right near the waterfront. So, as we're parking and we're getting out, they're trying to tell me about the restaurant, but my head is spinning. I'm looking at the waterfront. And so, anyway, after dinner, I said, can we go walk the waterfront? And they're like, yeah. So, I, and I'm not gonna take everybody's time, but it was just, it was beautiful. There was, I mean, a pier. There was a playground. There was a huge gazebo. City Hall overlooked it all. Community swimming pool. I mean, the whole thing was just well-thought-out, well-designed. And it was just a community asset that focused on the the natural beauty of their little town there, right there on the St. John's River. And I got excited and hopeful. And I was thinking about our feasibility study. And I I really, really hope that when that study comes through, that it's something more than just nebulous concepts and maybe, you know, a grand thought, a grand scheme. I really hope it's, it contains some tangible projects, something we can, you know, get our hands into and work into. Because, you know, having seen it in other cities, how they take advantage of their natural beauty and make it a focal point of their city, it's like, yeah, we can, we can do something like this. And it's exciting to think that we're on the path. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sonar. Uh, student representative, Tabitha.
Thank you. Um, as you all know, uh, the hockey team is going to state. Um, I am on the drum, uh, marching band now. We upgraded from a drum line. Um, and yes, upgraded.
Would you like to change your verbiage, sir?
No.
Might have to change the seating arrangement here.
But as I'm on the marching band, we had to send off the, uh, hockey team. So, that was actually rather fun. In with sports, the baseball practices are currently still ongoing. They're very interesting, to say the least. We aren't doing much, but we are at least practicing. Coach was hoping that we wouldn't, um, go all the way to state, maybe even to the lower 48s this year. So, he's really trying to push us. In regards to, um, the Peach Fuzz Tournament as of, uh, the last, uh, meeting, I am proud to say that the juniors have won. I am a junior myself. We have won against all of the other classes and the teachers, so. And, uh, I failed to mention this last meeting, I think. But, um, currently, we are undergoing spirit points. Did I mention that last meeting? Okay. Um, spirit points is every time that we have a spirit week or we have a canned food drive or any of those, you know, school-sponsored ideas, we each as a class compete against each other. So, like whoever brings in the most cans gets that amount of spirit points. Right now, the seniors are in the lead. But at the end of the school year, we were planning on having a class-wide pizza party for the winner. So, that is going to be fun. Currently, we are voting on the Ski Night name. Currently, we are voting on the Ski Night name. Yeah, Ski Night, yes. So, that's all that I have for the school, and as for myself, I wanna thank you guys again for allowing me to be on the city council. Honestly, I think my friends have had enough of me bragging about it, um, but I think that using this as an opportunity to learn, and, you know, kinda grow more into an adult and see what you adult folk are doing is, um, a spectacular thing that I can be a part of, so thank you guys, honestly.
Thank you, and I will say it is nice to have a student rub back on the body, appreciate that. Councilmember Petty.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I, too, would like to, um, thank Bob Springer for serving our community, uh, community on planning and zoning, and I did have the privilege to serve with him on planning and zoning, and wish he and his beloved, um, best in their endeavors moving forward. Also, I would like to say that, um, the library is, uh, seeking volunteers to come and help in putting little stickers on books to make our library books more secure, and so, there is an orientation, and you can call Ms. Wolf, and she'll help you get oriented, and, um, you can serve our community in that way, if anyone, um, in our community is interested. Also, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Brittany Brown for serving, um, as the director over the chamber, and her excellent work that she's done, and wish her the very best in her next endeavor. Last but not least, it is First Thursday, which is one of my favorite opportunities, and with the jail opportunity and the jail ale, and, um, the beautiful works of art that you'll be able to enjoy, I just encourage everyone to attend, and thank you for giving me the privilege.
Thank you, Councilmember Petty. Seeing no other business before this body, we are adjourned.